Okay, good evening, everybody. We apologize for the delay. We had some technical difficulties. The magic and the beauty of technology. We will now reconvene this special city council meeting. Ms. City Attorney, would you please report the closed session action?
There were two items on the closed session agenda. Item number one, the city council approved the settlement agreement in the listed case, which once fully executed will be available in the city clerk's office. And then item number two, Mayor Protemp Pacheco made a motion with Mayor Frometa second and unanimously approved by the city council to defend Councilmember Alvarez in the litigation under a reservation of rights. And I also note that Councilmember Alvarez abstained from a part of the discussion, which involves her personal finances pursuant to the Political Reform Act Regulation, Section 18702.5, and that ends the closed session report.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. The special city council meeting is now adjourned. Now, before I begin the regular city council meeting, I would like to inform members of the public that I will be taking public comment for non-agenda public comment and for items on the agenda via our teleconference line. Those wishing to address the city council may call 562-299-6622 when I make the announcement. In order to ensure that non-English speakers receive the same opportunity to directly address the city council, the city of Downey will continue to follow Government Code Section 54954.3B2 and provide non-English speakers double the allotted time to make their public comments, utilizing a translator. All other speakers will be given the allotted three-minute speaking time as established by the Downey Municipal Code unless modified by the mayor. All public comments will be recorded into the record. Once your time has ended, the call will be immediately disconnected. For those who have submitted their comments via email, your comments will be read into the record at the appropriate time during the meeting, and no additional public comment will be permitted via teleconference. I would like to call to order the regular city council meeting. City Clerk Duarte, would you please take role?
Yes, Mayor. Before I take role, I would like to inform members of the audience that Councilmember Alvarez is participating in this meeting via teleconference. Councilmember Alvarez?
Here.
Councilmember Ashton?
Present.
Councilmember Trujillo? Mayor Protemp Pacheco?
Present.
And Mayor Frometa?
Present. I would like now to call Greg Welch, Chaplain for the Downey Police Department, to please lead us in the invocation. Mr. Welch, if you are with us, I see that you're connected. You can please lead us in the invocation. If we can please rise. Mr. Welch, are you on? Looks like we're having some technical difficulties. I'll go ahead and open up in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you this evening for your blessings. We thank you for the health that you bestow upon us. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come together as a community to conduct the people's business. Thank you for the protection that you give each and every one of us. Thank you for our police department, our fire department, and all of the people that work so diligently to keep our community safe. Thank you, Lord, for my council colleagues, each and every one of them and their families. I pray, Lord, that as we come together tonight to make decisions on behalf of the city of Downey, that you would give us wisdom, that you would give us the fortitude to do the right thing, and that, Lord, that you would continue to guide the city of Downey in all of the decisions that we have to make, that you've called us to make, and that we are honored, Lord, to be able to make on behalf of our constituents. Thank you for every department that is represented. Thank you for our city manager, our assistant city manager, and all of the Downey city staff that work so hard to make this city the city that it is. We pray all these things in your name. Amen. If I may, please ask Councilmember Trujillo to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We have two presentations tonight. One is in honor of the Day of Remembrance of the Armenian Genocide, and former Mayor Kirk Cartosian, a dear friend and a friend of the community, is here to accept this proclamation. I'm going to go down and do that.
We, over the past several years, we have come as a community to acknowledge the genocide that the Armenian community endured. And Kirk, I'd want to thank you for being here today. You have been involved in this community. You're a former mayor of the city, and certainly you have been involved in many aspects of the development and the growth of our community. But you're also a member of the Armenian community because of your background. I would like to read this to you. Whereas the extermination of more than 1.5 million Armenians by the Ottoman Turks and the deportation of countless others is remembered every year on April 24th since 1915 as Armenian Martyrs' Day. And whereas between 1915 and 1923, Armenians witnessed the slaughter of their relatives and the loss of their ancestral homeland. And whereas modern Turkey continues to deny and distort the facts of this genocide of the 20th century and further honors the perpetrators of that crime against humanity as national heroes. And whereas the continued denial of the Armenian genocide by the present-day Turkish government deprives the Armenian people of the right to their own history. And whereas the Armenian people have not received reparations for their losses and whereas ancestral Armenian lands have not been returned to the Armenian people. Now therefore, I, Claudia Frometa, Mayor of the city of Downey, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Downey, hereby designate April 24th of each year as a city day of remembrance of the Armenian genocide and declare that the memory of the victims of this genocide will never be forgotten. I think this year marks an important year because finally the President of the United States declared and recognized this atrocity. And, you know, we think about humanity and we think about our brothers and sisters in different lands and how this marked generations of people. So I just want to thank you for being here. I know you just came back from being out, and I want to thank you for your continuing support of our community. I would like to ask you to say a few words if you'd like.
Never give a full person a mic. Thank you, Claudia, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, friends of the CEO. It's always an honor to be here in the former chambers where I was able to serve. It's an awesome responsibility, and I know this council will do a great job this year under your leadership. I grew up in Downey as a proud American continually, proud Armenian. Most of my neighbors and friends and classmates were Caucasian, Latino, and Asian. Not too many Armenians were around. And but I always, you know, we all have a sense of pride of where we came from, and that's part of our experience as humans, to connect with others on a human level, too. So you need to know where you're from in order to understand where you are with current humanity. So I always took that very, took very much to heart. I love all the cultures that I grew up around, even though it wasn't necessarily my own. But yes, this past Saturday was a bold step that the Biden administration made for the first time ever. No president had had the courage to do so. If anyone knows my politics, I'm not necessarily a big fan of the Biden administration, but that doesn't necessarily mean I don't have an awesome respect for the courage to do it because our government has had, you know, mainly through NATO alliance responsibilities with allies. So this Saturday was a nice reaffirmation of what many people obviously already knew. As a former history teacher, I was able to teach the, through California curriculum, the Armenian genocide because it was recognized through resolution through the California State Legislature and many countries throughout the world, including Argentina, Brazil, France, the UK, Australia, and many others. So thank you for allowing, you know, a part of myself to be, to receive this on behalf of the Armenian community. But I also want to share that we don't see ourselves as different from any other people. Many groups of people have in the past been through atrocities, have been challenged, have had to find ways of getting stronger through it, although you would never wish it upon any. And I think that is a part of what we try to learn from it. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate the city of Downey and council supporting this on an annual basis.
Thank you. And I would like to call Ms. Rakdi Cloak, our emergency manager, for a presentation. It's always nice to see you, Rakdi. Thank you for keeping our city prepared.
Good evening, everybody. Excuse me. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for having me here. As usual, I usually visit the city council every two to three months to provide an update of the COVID-19 response. My last update was back in January 21st. I think everyone's been following along in the news. There's been a lot of good news, more than bad, so I'm really excited to share some of those, and I'll highlight a few. Just really quickly, back in January, we did do food distribution, serving over 2,000 households. Back in January, we were at the most restrictive, the purple tier. The state has done a lot of different things to try to alleviate the struggles that residents have experienced, including the state's landmark residential eviction moratorium that goes through June 30th. In February, we saw some other great things. The federal government had extended the federal cost share to now fully reimburse states for emergency relief programs dating back to the beginning of the pandemic. We also saw in mid-Jan, February, that schools were able to open onsite learning for grades TK through six. In March, the Court of Appeal did acknowledge public health's temporary restriction for outdoor dining despite economic impacts. We saw in January a lot of eligibility for our transit workers, janitorial staff as well. Downey also extended its temporary moratorium on evictions for commercial tenants through June 30th. Bringing us to April. In April, we saw a lot of eligibility for 50- through 64-year-olds. And we, LA finally entered orange tier, opening up many different things, allowing outdoor dining to 25% capacity or 100, whichever is fewer. And I was referring to breweries, wineries, and distilleries. For restaurants, we saw 50% capacity for indoor dining. And travel bans loosened up as well. If you were fully vaccinated, meaning two weeks have passed since your last shot, then you were able to skip the quarantine period. And we saw mid-April, LA County Health Order started to align with the state's blueprint for safer economy. We did see a little bit of a setback. We saw some side effects from the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccines. So we did pause the use of that just for an abundance of caution. But we also saw LA County open eligibility for vaccination for residents 16 years or over. Recently, we also did a food distribution here in Downey, serving more than 3,000 households. Again, to make sure that vaccination is more eligible, there is now a limited number of walking registrations for county-run mass vaccination sites, and Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine is now being used again. So you can see there's a lot of great news. Unfortunately, whenever I look at the stats, it is very heartbreaking. Overall, these are numbers since the pandemic has started, but I do see a drastic decline in the rate of increase. So that's amazing, but unfortunately, Downey still has seen close to 300 deaths since the pandemic. Here's some numbers from the number of vaccine distributed in LA County. Here in Downey, I know the numbers is a little hard to see, but we actually, at our, 49% of residents in Downey have at least gone their first dose of vaccines. Also locally in Downey, we actually have a mega shelter site at LA County Office of Education. The city is collaborating with LA County Public Health to host a closed vaccination site that will target community-based organizations that serve vulnerable population. Here are some numbers and updates regarding things that we've been doing to make sure that our residents stay informed. We've had 21 mayor videos since the pandemic, over 3,300 COVID-19 hotline calls. Here internally are for our emergency operations center. While things have pretty much stayed steady, we still continue to monitor the situation. We focus heavily on cost recovery to make sure we recoup some of those costs. This becomes even more important now that we have the American Rescue Plan that has passed through Congress. And we continue to distribute personal protective supplies to not only our city departments, but our partner agencies as well. We have a photo there with our firefighters helping to distribute some of those supplies. Here's pictures from the food drive recently. Parks and Recreation Department continues to remain active assisting our seniors. Between January 26th, currently, we've streamed more than 12,000 senior grab-and-go meals. We've conducted more than 4,200 wellness checks and over 1,200 home meal deliveries. Virtual recreation programming, it's very much active, and we see some of our staff there filming. And I know this is a great thing to see. We've seen a return to in-person outdoor fitness and sport classes. The mayor's mental health program, this is available every Tuesday, Thursday, from 2:00 to 5:00, and we've so far assisted nine individuals. Our department has seen also a decline in COVID-related incidents. Fire department is also looking into how we can begin again to reengage the public. And despite everything that's happened, we have welcomed eight new firefighters to the team. Human Resources has not stayed idle. Our human resources continue to follow the most up-to-date policies, and the city did update its COVID-19 supplemental paid sick leave policy to help employees address any health and safety issues. In terms of community development, we have a lot of different resources. We have close to $1 million for rental assistance. Funds are still available. Please do, the number's right there, contact us at 299-6706. In terms of business assistance, we have quite a bit. So far, we've assisted five small businesses. 60 applications have been distributed, 14 applications under review, 135 businesses on the waiting list, and funds are still available. Please do, again, that number's 299-6706. I'm not going to go through all the lists, but there are quite a slew of different resources for small businesses through both state, federal programs and such. So please visit us at DowneyCA.org/coronavirus. Again, there's a lot of other resources for residents. One of the ones that you may have been hearing a lot about is funeral assistance. So again, please visit us at DowneyCA.org/coronavirus. So what's open now? Again, we're the orange tier, so as I've already mentioned, indoor capacity. Dining for restaurants are at 50%, bars with no meal services are opening up, has limited capacity, but you're also able to attend breweries and wineries, movie theaters, 50% capacity gyms, fitness centers at 25%, and museums, indoor capacity 50%. Again, if you want most up-to-date information, feel free to go to LA County's COVID-19.LACount.gov/recovery. If you have any doubt, please visit Downey's website. Here's our website right there. And if you're not really a computer person, feel free to call us at 299-6711. That is our hotline. We have a human to answer your calls. They speak both English and Spanish, so please feel free. Don't hesitate. If there's anyone you know that needs assistance, please do call us. And that concludes my updates. Any questions?
So you flashed by one slide really quickly. I think it was the third one, right there. I wanted to focus on that because I've had, you wouldn't believe how many calls I've had about yard sales. So they're officially back? We can, they can start having them again?
Yes. Permits are $10. Yard sales, just come to the cashier counter.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rakdi, for your presentation. Appreciate it. Okay, now we are moving on to city council member announcements, requests for future agenda items, conference meeting reports. And I will start with my left, Councilmember Trujillo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I had the opportunity to attend the Downey Art, Culture, and History, I think it's ad hoc committee? I'm not sure what we decided to call it, but it was a great meeting at the State Gallery. We met with Gabriel Enamorado, who runs the State Gallery, and talked about the vision of this committee being the place where Downey residents who are interested in culture, arts, Downey history, if anybody has any ideas, we're going to be meeting at the State Gallery. That's sort of going to be the headquarters for the committee. And I see that the State Gallery, there's a lot of potential for them to implement these ideas that residents would bring to us. So I'm looking forward to continuing to work with that committee along with also woman Alvarez. Also had an opportunity with Madam Mayor to attend the Affordable Housing Committee. Learned a lot. Look, I know that when we discuss rent control, I think there was an agreement somewhat probably amongst all of us that affordable housing is something that we should try to prioritize for our residents. As we know, about 50% of our residents in Downey are currently renters, and the other 50% are homeowners. It'd be great if we could move the needle and maybe make it a goal to have 10% of those renters become homeowners, right? And if we could achieve that through affordable housing, maybe some down payment assistance in the form of a silent second, right? Because cities shouldn't be in the business of just giving away money, but I think we could invest our money. And one of the safest investments is a deed against the house, a lien against the house, right? To protect our city money, it could be used for other families. So we're looking into that. Land is the issue. Land is very expensive, especially in today's real estate market. So we're looking at different options. That committee met, and we are working towards that. And just going back to the focus for myself, what I call the Brass Plan, B-R-A-S-S. I would like city staff to start looking into, what is the future of Wi-Fi? Is it really broadband? What are other cities doing? During the campaign trail, I heard a lot about spectrum. And I'm not trying to badmouth spectrum by any means, but as a spectrum resident myself, it's been going down, I think, the last year, maybe it's because so many people are home, right? Because of the pandemic, but that shouldn't be the case. I would like Downey to be at the forefront of what the future is in terms of accessing the internet. What is the best thing for a city of our size to do, to be at the forefront of gaining access to the internet for our residents? So I'm not sure how we go about that, Mr. City Manager, but I'm curious to see what other cities are doing and how we can be at the forefront of this. And I don't know if the B in brass is going to stay, but that's what the B stands for in my plan, broadband. The next thing, the R is residential streets. As you know, we're very much concerned about that. Again, moving the needle, I'm very big on numbers. I would like to leave my term, my first term, with some movement on those numbers. The A is for alleys. I will be looking into cleaning up our alleys, identifying which was of the shady alleys in Downey that we want to clean up and perhaps illuminate with motion detector lights that could be affordable, and perhaps the city can help residents and homeowners with that. And the last two letters are S and S, S for sidewalks, and the last S is for streetlights. I've asked my public works commissioners to work with the city to identify the need for streetlights. You know, we talk about, well, we need streetlights. Well, I would like to know where. I would like to know the 10 spots where the residents feel we need street lighting the most for public safety reasons. And then we will go about the business of trying to figure out how we can get that lighting installed. So with that said, thank you, Madam Mayor, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Trujillo. And to my far right, Councilmember Ashton.
Madam Mayor, it's good to be back. So for those of you that have been, why hasn't Councilmember Ashton been at the meeting? So I've been hesitant because of the pandemic, obviously, but I've just had my, I'm two weeks clear of my second dose, so I'm fully vaccinated and I feel comfortable being here. And for those of you that have not gotten your vaccinations, I encourage you to look into it and get what information you need. I know the county has, they're practically doing it almost as a walk-up now. So I believe it's, there's something, my turn, county? I don't exactly remember, but if you email me or text me or whatever, let me know. I'll get you the information. I have it on my phone. But definitely look into it. I think once more of us get our vaccinations, the closer it'll get to what we would consider normal. With that said, a couple items for staff. I know Mayor Protemp Pacheco and myself were on a committee looking into flavored tobacco and that. And I know there's been things that have been happening that I just saw an article today about possibly banning menthol cigarettes and that. And I think it'd be a good opportunity for us to get together to kind of see where we're at with what we can do here in Downey for that. So I know that's something that we brought up way before, you know, before the pandemic. And I think we need to start working on that again, just to...
Just to let you know, I did reach out this week.
Just to let you know, I did reach out this week to our city prosecutor. He's preparing a document that can be used as a staff report to bring the item back. So he's working on that. I'll get it to you. And maybe that'll be the
I appreciate you reading my mind. Thank you. One other issue that I do have, I brought it up at the council meeting, the last council meeting was the traffic issues and related to the Tiempo Cantina. I'm still getting complaints. Nothing's really improved and, you know, I don't know what can be done personally because I'm not involved, but I do see issues there, especially with with people, you know, jaywalking across because they're parking on the west side of Paramount. People letting people off in traffic, you know, to get in line. It's it's just not a good situation. A lot of the complaints I've been getting have been from residents on Albia Street, which is a dead-end street that's turned into a parking lot now for for the restaurant. And I would like to see if, and I asked this already of staff, but I just kind of wanted to make it public to see if we can look into doing a preferential parking district for that street because, you know, it's really an issue and I don't see why the residents there should have to deal with with their street being turned into a new parking lot for for that restaurant. So if we can look into say, you know, reaching out to the residents and see, well, one, seeing if that's something that's doable, but two, reaching out to the residents and seeing if that's something that they would be interested in as well. From what I've been told of the residents, I feel that they would be interested, but, you know, if we can get working on that. And with that said, that that concludes my comments. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashton.
I'm sorry, one one other thing. I apologize. I'm looking at almost an empty auditorium in here, and I was just wondering when we'll be able to open up for public to attend the meetings. One suggestion, I don't know if it's something that would be doable or not, but maybe in another room that has bigger access like the theater. I don't know if we can do the council meetings there to kind of help with social distancing, but still allowing public in. Or, you know, I know Councilmember Saab brought this up, you know, while he was on council, maybe moving to different places in the city, having meetings at like different locations like the Barbara Riley Center or wherever, or the Space Center, just to kind of, you know, one, highlight some of the things that we've done, and two, to just kind of mix it up a little bit. So if we can, you know, find out if that's doable.
Certainly, one of the things I've been actually in constant communication with our mayor in terms of when we open up. And, you know, as the numbers started going, I think we indicated that mid-May would be an ideal time to sort of open up our chamber. Obviously, our city hall, just to remind the public, the city of Downey has been open longer than any city in probably in the southeast at all. So we just essentially shut down for a brief amount of time during the spike in the in the winter and December. But other than than that, it's, we've been open. Moving to, for example, to a larger facility, let's say that the theater, the theater's under construction. Actually, you have an item on your agenda tonight. So that's going to be down. But the amount of, all our servers are here. It's a it's a huge undertaking and super expensive to do that. So what we'll do is we'll manage the facilities. Because we're in a different tier now, we'll be able to allow more people in. So those issues will be mitigated as well as we move forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashton.
And that finally concludes my
Okay. Madam Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to welcome everyone who's watching us this evening virtually. Thank you for joining us for your council meeting. I also want to welcome back Councilmember Sean Ashton. It's a pleasure to have you back. It's nice to see you in person. And I'm glad that you also got fully vaccinated. I also got fully vaccinated last Wednesday. So as a reminder, and before I go on, is Rakdi here? I just wanted to thank Rakdi for, may I please thank Rakdi for the great presentation? I just wanted to thank her for the great presentation. As she mentioned, vaccines are now available for anyone over the age of sixteen. I had the pleasure of getting both of my vaccinations here in Downey at the Mega Vaccination Hub. And I have to say that it was really easy, very efficient. Everybody was really nice. And I've been told by numerous residents that this location is a great location. So if you haven't been vaccinated, please make sure to schedule your appointment so that we can slowly but surely get out of this pandemic. I next wanted to mention some events that I had the pleasure of attending. On March fifteenth, I was invited as a guest speaker for the Surrails College Foundation. As an alumni, I shared my path from Surrails College to where I'm at now. And I know I've said this many times before, but for me, helping the youth and seeing them grow has always been a passion of mine. From Kibonis to where I'm at now, my focus has always been helping the youth. So it's these kind of events that I enjoy where I get to speak to the students. It was a virtual event, but it was still a lot of fun. Also, on April sixteenth, I had the pleasure of attending a drive-through food distribution with our mayor in collaboration with the Assembly Member Christina Garcia. We provided enough food to feed families for an entire month. This is amazing. A lot of food was provided. And it's so truly a pleasure being out there and helping the community, especially during these difficult times. And I just want to thank Vania for job well done. It's always a lot of work. And you make it look so easy, even though I know it can be stressful, but great job to our city staff, a great job. And I also want to thank our Downey Police Department because I hear nothing but but great remarks. So if we could share that to our police officers about how great they did and how everybody was really happy that they were there to assist. So again, fabulous job. And I'm glad I was able to participate. So I did, again, I just want to thank everyone for joining us here this evening virtually and for your being engaged in your city. And that will conclude my comments, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem Pacheco. Councilmember Alvarez, do you have comments tonight?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So first of all, good evening to everyone and each one of my colleagues. I know we have increased participation in these meetings, and I welcome this participation from our public. Thank you for being engaged, and I will keep my comments brief. So I wanted to clarify something about my medical condition. As I said on my social media recently, I was just in the ER. And I have a chronic condition and it's very painful. I can sit or still stand for long periods of time. And however, I will always do my best to attend these meetings. Sometimes we'll be able to have a camera on or sometimes not. Community members know that they can always reach me for anything they want. I am very accessible on social media and add my number, which is five six two three two eight nine four zero five. I have put it out there all the time. And my email, calveras@DownyCA.org. So I have a second issue that I wanted to bring up. As many know, years ago, I took twenty dollars worth on items from Michael Store in Downey Landing. And this project, these were projects applies for my two boys who were in fourth and fifth grade at Carpenter Elementary School. And unfortunately for for me and Michael Store, I was arrested by Downey police. So I have already posted my attorney's response to this matter, but I asked the mayor and the rest of my city council colleagues to release the results of any and all legal inquiries or investigations into this issue. It is very important that we be transparent with the public. Next, someone who used to be homeless here in Downey. I want to speak a little bit about current situation. I think we need to make sure that we are helping our homelessness and not victimizing them. I went to a ballpark a few months ago and I saw homeless people there, including veterans. Now I don't see them, and I'm really concerned. I think we need to treat this more with vulnerable members of our community with dignity and respect. We need to respect their poverty because they have so little, and we need to show compassion. Let's work on this together. Another thing that I wanted to express my concern about what happened this Sunday, also Apollo Park. There were indigenous Native American Indian community members carrying out a religious ceremony, and specifically a coming-of-age rite, which is a dancer. There were participants not just from Downey, but from other cities and parts of the state. They made a religious pilgrimage for this religious event, and it was a religious coming-of-age ceremony for children turning into adolescents. And the ceremony started at six AM asking for mothers care for youth and they grow up into adults. It was supposed to go until three. The ceremony was cut short, but Downey police, there were officers saying they were going to take away the religious drums. And I'm concerned about what happened here. As we know from our First Amendment, the public has the right to assemble, to speak, to congregate for religious purposes, and the community was exciting their religious liberties. Also, I ask again that we spend tonight's public comments. Hopefully, we can. No matter who among the council member gets attacked, we don't have a right to talk back to the public. We don't have a right to disrespect or right to first freedom of speech. Our public deserves to have more speaking time. There's no more basis for us to limit the public's time. We need to protect and spend their First Amendment rights. Also, I wanted to request for the staff to agendize a discussion for hero pay. This is for grocery and drug retailers, workers in Downey for the next meeting. For deciding to have staff prepare, have staff prepare a report, options for canceling, including pay, length of time, threshold for who would be covered, use neighboring cities that have passed like Long Beach, Montevelo, Los Angeles City and City County as basis for this discussion. And with this concludes my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarez. Good evening, everybody. I have some announcements. We, with Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I had the pleasure of attending the food distribution that was conducted the sixteenth of April. And again, we did that in collaboration with Assemblywoman Christina Garcia's office. And Vania, thank you for all the hard work that goes on to planning and coordinating and the logistics of these events. Thank you for that. Over three thousand families in Downey and surrounding areas participated in this food distribution event. Also, on the nineteenth of April, we conducted our, we had a clergy council meeting. We had one of our highest attending meetings with thirty-two participants. And one of the things that I really enjoy about being in this seat is our ability to come together and and make an impact in our community and invite others to join forces. And the clergy council is one of many groups that brings together people. And and again, people with the mindset of helping others, different faiths, different backgrounds. That was a very good meeting with good presentations. April is Child Abuse Awareness Month, and we discussed that. May coming up is Mental Health Awareness Month, and we will be discussing a little bit more about that. I also, on April twenty-second, last Thursday, I had the the privilege to to deliver to our residents, our community, the first mayoral virtual town hall. And I want to give you a quick report. Also, I want to thank city staff for participating. We had nine panelists, a total of ninety-eight attendees. We had forty-one questions. We answered twelve questions on the air, and the rest of the questions are being answered and are being filtered, forwarded, excuse me, to our various departments for answer. And I will be answering some of those myself. The goal is to have them all answered by this Thursday. So please stay tuned and bear with us. As Councilmember Trujillo mentioned earlier, we have the Affordable Housing Committee. And this is to explore options for future development and look at a balanced approach and a balanced inclusion of affordable housing units in Downey. And again, I know this raises some some thoughts. In many of our community members, we realize our city is built, built already. There are some areas that are are good potential areas for development. And so we are, we are carefully and thoughtfully looking at that. As we've discussed before, there are state mandates about the affordable housing, and we are looking at that. Over the weekend, this last weekend, we had a busy weekend as well. We, I had the opportunity to celebrate Arbor Day with a tree planting small ceremony alongside a Downey Girl Scout troop number one one four three. And so I want to give a shout out to all of the parents that brought their Girl Scouts to participate in in this tree planting. And again, together, continue to foster the 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 love for nature and for taking care of our environment. On Saturday, I also had the opportunity to give the welcome remarks at the Assistance League Assistines Self Improvement Day. And again, these are young ladies and young men that participate over four years with the Assistines Program. And that also is is an honor to be able to come out and also speak to them about different things. We are also happy to share that our library is moving into an indoor operating mode. And again, in line with public, LA County Public Health Guidelines, the starting date for welcoming people back into our new public library is May third. Twenty-five percent, at twenty-five percent capacity. There are announcements that are coming up through our various social media platforms. So we're really excited about that. Many of you have asked, have emailed me and have asked me in different ways if yard sales are permitted. And yes, yard sales are now permitted in our city. Again, we need to continue to adhere to to the to the protocols. Just today, it was announced by the CDC that people that are fully vaccinated do not have to wear their facial coverings if they're outdoors with other fully vaccinated people. And again, we are trying our best to ensure that we are following the guidelines so that together we can move forward into a more normal reopening and post-COVID time. I also am encouraged to know that we are very close to moving into the yellow tier. And again, Councilmember Ashton, you mentioned earlier during your comments, you know, what is the plan? And I think City Manager Levas mentioned, we've been having discussions about that. We're looking, the state has the reopening date set as June fifteen, with LA County moving forward with additional reopenings and getting that into the yellow tier. We had discussed a reopening of our city council chambers by the middle of May. So that's, that's where we're at. I also want to address a couple of issues. Many individuals, and I think this has been said by other council members, we do have a transient issue, a homeless situation in our city, just as many other cities around us are grappling with. And many residents, in fact, last October, September, Councilmember Ashton and I attended a neighborhood watch meeting by residents living next to Apollo Park. And this neighborhood watch meeting, the purpose of it was to make us aware of the grave concerns these residents had regarding the homeless situation at Apollo Park. I think that my colleague and I are equally I think that my colleague and I are equally concerned. We are equally wanting to have other alternatives to help our unhoused. In fact, city staff gets called on a regular basis to send members of LASA, the Los Angeles Home Services Authority, to Apollo Park and any other area in our city that sees an amount of homeless individuals at any, in any given place. We constantly receive complaints, especially about Apollo Park. Our residents are aware that we've spent over $5 million in refurbishing that park. And I get calls and emails from athletic coaches letting me know that their athletes don't feel comfortable because they feel accosted by some of these individuals in the shelters. And so I think it's, you know, we, we provide, you know, our humanity, we provide the resources that are out there to, to help these most vulnerable individuals. The problem is, as LASA has been called out just about every other day, some of these members of the community do not need the help and they refuse the help. And so we are faced from a, from a council perspective, we are faced with a very difficult position where we want to do something about it. Our residents are clamoring that we do something about it because they don't want homeless individuals urinating, defecating and using old types of drugs, paraphernalia around their, their homes. And especially, we do have park hours in our parks. We, I want to make sure that the community understands that we are also in a very difficult position. We have every intention of helping the unhoused, but at the same time, we also need to balance the needs of our community residents that do pay taxes in their homes and that have communicated to us they don't feel safe going to, for a walk at the nearby park. So we really need to be mindful and understand the dynamics that we are facing. I do have a couple of items for staff and I know this was brought up earlier and I thank you. Many of our residents have found a way to let us know on social media, through various social media pages, if there are issues that are going on in the community. There's an area off of Telegraph by the MTA stop in the area of Downey that is increasingly growing with debris and trash. And I communicated that to the city staff and they are working on that issue. I wanted to make sure that that is on the, on the record and is reported and our residents that are joining us via Zoom and YouTube are aware that that issue is being taken care of. We're also going to be looking at the area of Woodruff and Firestone by the railroad tracks. That area continues also to grow in debris and trash. We hope that with a reopening, that we can come back to keep Downey beautiful and, and begin those, those monthly cleanups. Those have always been such a great tool in our community to get everybody involved, clean it up. I also want to say thank you to the Downey Police Department. About 1:00 in the morning on Saturday, I was alerted of about six vehicles that were exiting the 605 on Florence and that were attempting to travel westbound and they were getting to, to do street racing. And so I contacted dispatch and our Downey PD responded and they were able to put a stop to that street racing. So I just want to say thank you, Downey PD. We continue to, to have a good and strong response and please continue to do the ongoing street speed enforcement that we've been discussing. That's all I have for now. Thank you all. I always say, strong communities, I engage communities. We look forward to having you in person very soon. And one, one other thing I wanted to mention is with the, that's it. That's, that's all for now. Now is the time for non-agenda public comment. Before we begin the non-agenda public comment period, I would like to remind members of the public participating telephonically that the city's meeting rules contained in the Downey Municipal Code prohibit any conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting, even if you're participating telephonically. Due to the high volume of calls and correspondence received for tonight's meeting, each speaker shall have two minutes to address the council on issues that are within the city's jurisdiction. Since we are under a federal, state, and local emergency declaration in Los Angeles County's safer at work and in the community order, I will limit this non-agenda public comment period to 30 minutes. Pursuant to Downey Municipal Code Section 2105G, in order to ensure the non-English speakers receive the same opportunity to directly address the city council, the city of Downey will continue to follow Government Code Section 54954.3B2 and provide non-English speakers double the allotted time to make their public comments utilizing a translator. As I've indicated, due to the high volume of calls and correspondence received, each speaker will receive two minutes speaking time. Members of the public who wish to address the city council regarding non-agenda items may now call our teleconference phone line at 562-299-6622. Each speaker will have two minutes to address the council on non-agenda items. For those who submitted comments via email, your comments will be read into the record and no further public comment via teleconference will be permitted. City Clerk Duarte, did we receive any written correspondence of non-agenda items to be read into the record?
Yes, Mayor, we did. The first correspondence received is from Mary Beth Vergara. Downey City Council, I just wanted to provide this public comment despite missing the deadline for tonight's council meeting to express my support and excitement for the completion of the Wilderness Park in Downey. As the project manager for this grant provided by the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy, I have had the pleasure of working with John Oskui and his public work staff to see this project through. The elements that were funded from this Proposition 1 Water Bond Grant included the wetlands, lakes primarily, and other related elements. When the project was first evaluated, the strength of the project was that it ensured sustainability and health of the wetlands at the Wilderness Park, enhanced connectivity between the park and the Sangre Abreu River Trail, and fostered wetlands and riparian awareness and stewardship. The connection of the northern and southern ponds was a new irrigation system and the estuaries are already being thoroughly enjoyed by the Downey community as well as other regional park users, including local wildlife, geese, ducks, and birds. The new educational signage serves as an element that provides information about the local flora and fauna that can be seen at the park. My only request is for the bilingual signage that has not been completed yet. On a personal note, I visited the park many times with my young daughters and I am very proud to have played a role in the renovation and enhancement of the ponds which function as wetlands in my own city's backyard. The park has set a high standard for other local and regional parks and that is something to be proud of. Look forward to future collaboration with other park projects. Congratulations, city staff and Downey residents. The next correspondence is from Kevin Esser. The human race is eternally torn between dwelling tendencies and impulses, order and chaos. We are chaos and unlimited potential at our core. It is for this reason that we seek guiding principles to create order in life so we can function in the world. The city of Downey will realize its true potential when it recognizes that our chaotic core is not given its just due within our society. Too often, it is demonized as something wrong or something to be feared. Downey currently lacks the capacity to envision a world in which order and tradition can channel the rich power of our internal chaos. Neither tendency, order, or chaos need dominate within our society. Order can be configured to allow the chaotic expression of society to ignite and manifest our passions and power of creativity. The way for Downey to cement this acceptance of these dwelling tendencies is by recognizing that we are first and foremost sovereign individuals, accountable for the consequences of our actions and choices. It is important to understand the necessity of restraining passion at times to organize life within orderly communal values. I would love to see Downey City Council advocate for policy that respects the nature of both chaos and order. It becomes necessary to not sow it too far in any one direction because a repression of either tendency will cause harm to society. This city will truly be magnificent once it learns to recalibrate its collective and communal approach often and as needed to perpetuate balance. Balance is key. The next correspondence is from James Tobo. I, like most reasonable, hardworking, and goodwill people, ask that you register a vote of no confidence against DA George Gascon. As we all know by now, he will, he only cares about promoting his political agenda at the expense of crime victims. Gascon is truly detrimental to the safety and protection of LA County citizens. Please make things right and vote no confidence against Gascon. The next email is from Robert Gavera. I've been a resident of Downey since 1979. Have noticed the changes in the last 10 years and gone worse. Vehicles parked on lawns, motorhomes parked on streets for weeks, travel trailers, boats, and other recreational vehicles parked in driveways, sometimes almost parked on the streets. Why does it, why is the city allowing this? I remember when residents kept their vehicles inside their garages. Now it's difficult to find a parking space on the streets. Downey was beautiful and residents cared about the looks. Your code enforcement officer should be doing a better job. Of course, they do need better leadership. Next correspondence is from Cecilia Rojas.
Hi, I am a city of Downey resident for the past six years. I moved here from Long Beach after the father of my children was murdered by gang members. He is Elgang. As the ex-wife of Thomas Almas, rest in peace. And in behalf of my children and grandsons who cannot see the father and grandfather because he was murdered, I'm asking City Mayor and members to please, for the sake of the city as well, vote no confidence to get District Attorney George Gascon out. I notice more gangsters also been out doing graffiti in this beautiful city.
Next correspondence is from Mariela de Silva. Hello, I'm asking the Downey City Council to follow the lead of great cities such as Beverly Hills, Santa Clarita, Pico Rivera, El Mirada, and approve a vote of no confidence in George Gascon's reforms. We stand against his special directives and his reforms, which protect dangerous criminals while ignoring the cries of victims' families. These families deserve justice. By denying prosecutors from filing for sentencing enhancements and barring them from being involved in the parole process, he is advocating for the early release of these five criminals. When we disregard the actions of criminals, we put our community in danger and undermine the work that law enforcement is doing. The next correspondence is from Trish Morris. Good evening. I once again am compelled to ask you to resign your position as city council member. It has come to my attention that you may have assisted in the organization and/or sponsorship of an event held at Apollo Park on Sunday, April 25. The flyer I saw indicated that it commenced at 6:00 AM. Was this event sanctioned by anyone in an official capacity in the employ of the city of Downey? Was a permit obtained? Did the city collect the appropriate and applicable fees from vendors? It appears to me that you are under the misguided impression that your position allows you to act without regard for the law. Historically, elected officials are held to a higher standard. Please vacate your seat and let someone who cares about our fair city, its residents, and laws occupy it. Thank you. Next correspondence is from Joseph Bartolo.
My name is Joseph Bartolo and I am a resident of Downey. Catherine Rojas Alvarez has made libel and slanderous statements about me on her Facebook page. That was dated on April 21st, 2021. This woman is attempting to have her Goon Squad to try to intimidate me because I had supported a Downey resident who had taken a picture of her walking to portals while wearing her Downey City Council jacket after she had claimed on the previous meeting that her leg was injured and that she couldn't appear at the Downey City Council chambers of her injured leg. This woman is a liar who has been convicted of perjury, shoplifting, and welfare fraud. She has hosted a large event on April 25th at the Apollo Park. She has violated the COVID regulations. She needs to be removed from city council immediately. She also needs to return the Downey City Council jacket. She views that jacket as a crown and therefore she views herself as the queen of Downey.
Next correspondence is from Lee Squire. Lee Squire, Vietnam Veteran Member, American Legion Fellowship of Christians and Jews. Good evening, Mayor and City. Good evening, Mayor and City. Subject Holocaust Remembrance Day. Holocaust Remembrance Day was on April 8th, 2021. It is a day each year to honor those who were murdered under the evil of Nazi tyranny. Six million Jews were murdered, of which 1 million innocent Jewish children were murdered. It is a reminder that no class, race, or people should ever again be subjected to genocide. I also present this as there is once again rise in antisemitism against Jews. We in America, we must show support of Jews by including them in every Memorial Day and Veterans Day. I reach out to veterans groups in Downey and cities in America to reach out to Jewish temples to show America and the nation of Israel, we stand and support Jews. To veterans, it also shows honor to our brothers and sisters who liberated Jews from Nazi tyranny and concentration camps. I ask clergy council and veterans council to not cancel Memorial Day, May 31st, 2021. It is when we honor those who gave their lives in service to country. God bless America and the nation of Israel. The next correspondence is from Lisette Rivera.
Good evening, Madam Mayor from Etta and City Council members. My name is Lisette Rivera and I am a longtime Downey resident. True leaders rule by example and their actions, especially when it pertains to their community's safety and well-being. Councilmember Alvarez hosted an event at Apollo Park on Sunday, April 25th with no permits, violating LA County's guidelines and without the city of Downey's knowledge or consent. She hosted this event with a couple hundred people, vendors, dancers, etc., with the majority of them not wearing facial covering and with complete disregard towards our community. The Downey PD were called twice as residents complained about the loud drums going on for hours, an event that started at 6:00 AM in the morning and went on for hours until 3:00 PM on a Sunday afternoon. She continues to refuse to follow the city's rules and process.
She continues to refuse to follow the city's rules and process. Plus, she ignores LA County guidelines. And she has the audacity to wear her Downey City Councilwoman jacket during the event, almost like a shield to do what she wants, when she wants, and how she wants it, yet expects others to follow rules and guidelines except for her. Talk about entitlement. Rules for thee, not for me. She is liable and should be held accountable for making decisions to host an event without prior approval, failing to adhere to local and state mandates disregarding the health of citizens and exposing, exposing COVID-nineteen to our community at large. Why was this event not shut down? If any one of us would have had this type of event, it would have been shut down immediately. So is someone getting preferential treatment? Talk about entitlement. Rules for thee, not for me. The next correspondence is from Elise Ramirez. On Sunday, April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, Catherine Alvarez organized an authorized event at Apollo Park without permits and also violated the current LA Public Health COVID-nineteen guidelines. Just two days before her event, the welfare fraud con artist Catherine was crying wolf requesting pity claiming to EMP and the possibility of having COVID. Then two days later, Catherine has the audacity to not adhere to local and state mandates disregarding their health of this community with her outrageous event, including loud live music, no permits that went on for hours. Catherine, how much were you paid under the table by the vendors at your event to look the other way and not obtain the proper permits? I am not surprised Catherine does not care about others in the community but herself. I couldn't enjoy the day at the park with my family because of the large gathering and loud music. How dare you, Catherine Alvarez? You are a fraud and must be held accountable for your destructive behavior. You continue to place your personal interests above the entrance of the community to enrich yourself. Rules for thee, but not for me, is Catherine's motto. Show your face at council meetings, you coward. I ask for city council to investigate and hold Catherine Alvarez accountable for hosting an event without permits that are required by all citizens. Holding a title does not give her the right to be above, above the rules and law. The next correspondence is from Maria Masiel Arensivia. Good evening, Madam Mayor. It has been a very difficult and emotional week ever since I was attacked on social media by Catherine Alvarez, putting me and my unborn child at risk. When Catherine and her henchmen attack our city, we are expected to silence her voices and allow her to use her title as a platform to bully residents on social media. The content in her post about me is false with the intent to harass and cause me harm. Her bullying behavior on social media is unethical and hope steps are being taken to avoid this type of behavior moving forward. I am not the only person she has harassed and cyberbullied on social media, but do hope I am the last. She needs to focus on the betterment of this community and bring unity, not attack, not attack our city and cyberbully residents that do not agree with her views. Blessings. Mayor, um, that is all on the correspondence, and we'll move on to the calls.
Thank you. Can I please have the first caller?
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Hello, this is Irma. I work for CBS in Downey. I've been there for about sixteen years. I'm just here to ask you to please put hazard pay on your agenda for the risks that we take every day. The pay must then be there as well. Um, a lot of the crew members have been sick with COVID. I got COVID back in November and still struggle with the symptoms. It's hard to get through the day. There's more things to do now. We never close. They're making profits while other businesses close. Uh, we have exceeded doubt, yet they cut our hours. It's just taking an emotional toll and stress of having to juggle the risks while making sure we get our job done. Customers don't practice social distance or their work mask correctly. They come and go. We are there all day. So I'm asking you to please consider hazard pay on your, to put hazard pay on your agenda. Please. Thank you.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Yes, I want to start off by saying that right now, uh, as we're talking about COVID-nineteen, let's remember that the, the person who gave the presentation says we've had three hundred deaths. Not only that, only thirty-nine percent have taken the first vaccine. Now, if you're looking at other studies, you'll realize that people are actually not going back for the second vaccine. So when we see our representatives not open City Hall, but allowed the schools, the restaurants, the businesses, everyone to open, people should take into account that what's happening is they're not trying to open. They're trying to keep it as close for as long as possible because they like the way they're running the show. Now, we'll see what's, I, I gotta ask Pacheco and the mayor, are you guys stupid? Cause you guys know about COVID, but here you are with Kirk Kertosian and Mario Trujillo shaking hands and giving hugs to each other? Pacheco, you just said, you took your va, second vaccine last Wednesday. That's not even two weeks. What, what are you doing? Man, idiots. Also, for the food giveaway, you guys are not telling the community that Christina Garcia is a sexual predator who has suffered litigation for harassing two over staffers, as well as she's trying to privatize the water of Downey and the entire LA County with AB eleven ninety-five. And just so you know, to the Downey community, Claudia and Pacheco, you guys were barely there an hour because we went to protest. And you guys were not there a majority of the time. So like every other politician, you're trying to take credit for the minimal work that you're really supposed to be doing. Finally, I'm gonna tell you, uh, from Etta, please, I have to hear you be a hypocrite all the time about how you help your community, but here's emails of you to leave.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Mommy? Can you hear me? Can you hear me, mommy? Hello? Am I speaking? All items of general public comment? Okay, I hope I'm getting through. I attended your special meeting at five-thirty, and I was at home all night, trying to talk to my mommy. And I noticed that you're still fucking alone. Watching each other without masks, social distancing, no. Now, you got a bunch of emails about the party we had at the park. Thank you, Councilwoman Alvarez, for bringing some fucking fun and entertainment to Downey. We had drugs. We had music. We had conversations about all kinds of things. And if you would have came from Etta, we would have given you a couple of Big Macs so you could sit there and eat them. We like to watch you eat. Yes, if anybody could eat, boy, she could eat. What a big fat fucking pig. Yes. So thank you for the party. Let's do it again this Sunday. Downey Municipal Park. Don't call the cops this time, but the cops are invited. They can come and watch. And then we'll have drum solos. That's right.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Hello, my name is, good evening, council members. My name is Brian Medina, and I'm a community organizer of Tree People. Um, as we're entering into another drought, water is super important for our communities here in southeast LA. And Downey is no exception. We're working on a state-funded project called Water Talks, which is aimed at getting feedback from hu, community members across LA regarding their water needs and concerns. And I'd like to invite you all and the Downey community to take our ten-minute water survey uh, by this Friday, April thirtieth, and help guide how millions of problem dollars go, are spent on future water projects. Uh, some questions cover topics such as water costs, mosquito control, and stormwater runoff and flooding on local streets. And all participants will also be entered into a raffle for a hundred dollar gift card. You can always go to tinyurl.com slash water LA over Spanish, tinyurl.com slash agua le, lea to participate today. You're also free to email me at BMedina at treepeople.org or call me at five-six-two-five-eight-four-one-four-one-oh if you have any questions. And I also would love to share bilingual fires with more details. This ten minutes of time will help to just guide how we can all have safe and clean water anywhere in LA County and all Southern California. Thank you so much for your time, and I hope you have a good evening. Thank you.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Okay, my name is Bruce Crow. It's a rough crowd out there. Boy. Um, anyway, I think if we just pay attention to our American roots in which we have from the battles of Lexington and Concord in April nineteen seventeen seventy-five, where the British tried to confiscate Patriots' gunpowder and assets, which was the beginning of the war for independence. And it ended at the Treaty of Paris on September third on seventeen eighty-three. It lasted eight and a half years. But in between that time, the founding fathers went ahead and penned what is known as the Declaration of Independence on July fourth seventeen seventy-six. And it stipulates that we know these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and that we are endowed by our Creator, universal, individual, natural rights, chiefst of among those life, liberty, and the pursuit of property. But focusing on life, understand that God gives us this life and that God is a sovereign being. He is not a sun. He is not a mountain. He is not a river. Something that you would find at, uh, Ms. Alvarez's gatherings. You'll find some of that kind of verbiage down there. And that the life that we are given as individuals, that we are sovereign human beings as well, and we are accountable for ourselves, even in the womb, we are accountable. So when we start treating people as individuals instead of a collective, we'll be able to have respect for each other, and we'll look past the skin color and ethnicity of people because that is just an incidental event in your life or at birth. The truth is that that tells us nothing of really who you are as a person. So we need to just look at people as individuals and not.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Robin.
Go ahead.
My name is Robin, and I've been an employee at Riting for thirty-six years. Since the beginning of the pandemic, we were declared essential workers. As an essential worker, I have not had the luxury of working from home. Every day we are exposed to people not wanting to put their mask on. It is extremely stressful going to work and wondering if I am exposed to COVID. As coworkers continue to get sick with COVID, I think about the risks I take on a daily basis and how I do everything I can not to bring it home to my family. I ask for your support today. We are on the front lines, and our wages should reflect that. I ask that you consider passing a hazardous pay for the city of Downey. Many cities have already done this with hazard pay ordinance and are supporting workers putting their lives on the line. Thank you.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Hello, my name is Melissa, pharmacy technician at CBS Pharmacy in Downey. This will be my fifth year. I'm speaking about my experiences for hazard pay. Last year, when the pandemic began, we offered COVID testing and we helped the public. And when the public was panicked, they would come in, into the store demanding to be tested for COVID, even though we could not offer scheduling in the store. We've had to deal with customers that refuse to wear masks, that don't respect the six feet apart rule. Even though we have a barrier, they still speak around the barrier, try to poke their head through the barrier. And now that our store is actually offering the COVID vaccine, it doesn't seem like business is slowing down. If anything, the company has profited during all this time. And as we put the safety of our customers ahead of ours, our safety is not being considered. We are a vaccinating store, and the capacity of the store has increased. It's not just shoppers. It's not just people filling prescriptions. It's people who have to stay in the store for fifteen minutes in order to be monitored. Because again, we put their safety ahead of ours. We want to make sure that they are okay. And people being social, they do not come alone to be vaccinated. There is no limit. CBS doesn't say come alone. People come with their family, their children, their caregivers. And as I am vaccinating people, I am definitely less than six feet apart from them. And their family members hover over me. The aisles are packed with people, and people receive an incentive. After a second dose, are encouraged to stay in the store and do shopping. Again, the business is profiting, and we are put at risk. And this is why I ask that you consider hazard pay.
Your time is up. Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Mommy from Etta, and you, Ms. Blanca, it's B. Herman, Herman this time, dumb bitches. Why were you calling me out the last time? Can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me?
This speaker's not speaking. We can hang up.
I'm not here. I can't hear. Are you there?
Please speak, or we're, we will disconnect.
Well, it's me, mommy. It's Herman this time. You, you, you mistaken me the last time for Mister, Mister Puppet. And you got confused, I think.
Please speak. Please. Please get to your point.
Are we in general public comment, please? Hello? Mommy? Are you listening to me? Don't you.
Madam Mayor, I think we should disconnect.
I think so too. Let's disconnect.
Mayor, we had, we are at thirty minutes now.
Okay, let's, uh, now is the time for consent calendar items. Members of the public wishing to address the city council regarding consent items only may now call our teleconference line at five-six-two-two-nine-nine-six-six-two-two. Each speaker will have two minutes to address the council on consent calendar items. For those who submitted comments via email, your comments will be read into the record, and no further public comment via teleconference will be permitted. City Clerk Dorothea, did we receive any written correspondence on, uh, on consent calendar items to be read into the record?
Yes, Mayor, we did. One moment, Mayor. We received a correspondence from Dorothy Pemberton regarding, uh, Code of Ethics. Item number. item number nine. Good evening, City Council. Last week, Council voted in a code of ethics for commissioners and committee members. Excellent. As a committee member of Public Works, I will gladly sign while I serve my city. Why wouldn't anyone want to be fair, honest, respectful, and be held accountable in a public seat? That should have been an easy yes vote by all council members. But it was not unanimously. Councilwoman Alvarez was the only no vote. I asked Councilwoman Alvarez why. Does this mean you don't want us to treat people fairly? Be honest, be ethical? Please let your residents know why you refuse to adopt this measure. Thank you, Councilman Ashton, for adding the Code of Ethics for the City Council too. We residents should see a yes vote from all. We want ethical public officials. If anyone votes no, then what are they hiding? What are you saying? Vote yes to ethics and accountability. The second correspondence is from Lee Squire. Regarding item number nine, Lee Squire, committee and board member, auditor and fraud examiner. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Subject: Ethics and Conduct Code. I am glad to see City Council is adopting similar ethics and conduct code adopted for commission, committee, and board members. However, I notice not included using public resources for political purposes. Also, this does not address City Council adopted ethics and conduct code for all city employees. This ethics and conduct code should include reporting of appearance of wrongdoing by city employees. This ethics and conduct code for city employees is all about good governance and accountability of we, the peoples', finances. Also, ethics and conduct code did not address free speech per First Amendment. Mayor, that is all on the correspondence, and I'll move on to the phone calls.
Thank you. Yes, please, let's go to the phone.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking. This is Consent Calendar Items Only.
My name is Teddy Juarez. Hey Catherine Alvarez, keep your camera on, you stupid, illiterate cunt. And how about that bitch, Rizalfo's? How about that bitch, Rizalfo's?
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking. This is Consent Calendar Items Only.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking. This is Consent Calendar Items Only.
Are you there, mommy? Consent items.
Mr. Herman, can you please lower your device?
How about now? I keep getting static, mommy. And it seems like there's a delay in my call because each time I try to listen to hear you guys, I can't hear nothing. And your closed caption is so small, I can't read. Are you discriminating because I'm blind?
Mr. Herman, this is Consent Calendar Items. Go ahead.
Okay. Regarding the issue on ethics, well, you see, a long time ago, California Constitution protects our rights as disabled citizens to participate in town hearing meetings. But apparently, law school case brief Snyder versus Phelps 580 F3D 206 for the record regarding homosexuals. Fuck homosexuals!
Please stay on topic.
Are you crazy?
Disconnect if he's not going to stay on topic.
Homosexual motherfuckers, niggas!
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Frometta, we can disconnect.
These calls are for Consent Items Only. We're going to give one warning, and if they don't stay on topic, then we will disconnect.
Please state your name and begin speaking.
Mommy! It's about the consent calendar, mommy! Mommy! Yeah, so you're tainting me, preventing me from using my mental abilities to my maximum space. That's what my therapist says. That's why I'm calling you. He says it's good to call you. It helps me decompress.
Sir, this is Consent Calendar Items Only.
I'm trying to use my mental mind on the consent calendar. Here it is. How about minutes? Is that on topic?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Puppet. That's my imaginary friend. Fuck number one. I don't want any minutes. Number two, warrants issued. Oh, no! They're going to arrest Claudia Frometta? No, I want my warrants. Don't arrest her. We don't want her going to jail. We want Saad going to jail, not her. Number three, Vjar. What the fuck kind of name is Vjar? Sounds Chinese. No, I want number three. Then we get to the residential street payments. There's so many bumpy fucking roads all over Downey. I can't drive through there without a tank. Yes, I want number four. Thank you. Number five, bids for well. A well? For what? Water? Oil? What the fuck are you drilling for? I want to know. And then number nine, ethics commission. Ethics, yes! And ethics requires that Claudia Frometta lose a minimum 50 pounds.
Time is up. Hello, please state your name and begin speaking. This is Consent Calendar Items Only.
Si, un traductor, por favor.
Okay, puede proceder?
Disculpe, me van a dar el tiempo necesario.
Excuse me, are you going to give me the appropriate time?
Uh, City Attorney, would you please answer that?
If this is a speaker who's a non-English speaker, he gets double time. Otherwise, it's just the two minutes that you've allotted.
Yo no me he identificado por la ley del Brown Act. Que quiere decir que usted no sabe quién soy yo para hacer esa decisión.
Puede proceder?
Me van a dar el tiempo necesario porque esto es una violación de mis derechos.
Are you giving me the necessary time because this is a violation of my rights? You have two minutes, now a minute and 37 seconds. Go ahead.
Última vez, yo no me he identificado.
Last time I didn't identify myself?
Por ley del Brown Act. Así es que usted no pueden estar adivinando quién habla español y quién no.
Señor, estamos hablando de los Consent Calendar Items. O si tiene algo que decir, por favor, proceda.
Okay, pues hay que hablar de la nueve entonces.
I'm going to speak about item nine.
No es buen carácter para la gente en servicio.
It is not good character of the people in office?
Que sean mentirosos y que anden trabajando con violadores sexuales como Cristina García.
It is, I'm sorry.
Es por eso que dije que usted no tenía la calificación para hacer este trabajo, Alicia Duarte. Ya está viendo por qué? A ver, diga eso. Ha perdido mucho tiempo y ustedes no traducieron, ni me dejaron hablar el minuto que yo debería de tener como hablador de español. Y voy a hacer un reporte legal contra la ciudad y el mayor. Gracias.
Please state your name and begin speaking.
En español, por favor.
Okay, puede proceder. Si me permite, después de que diga algunas palabras, permítame hablar.
Claro, gracias.
Puede comenzar.
Okay, yo quiero saber, en esta agenda, va a ser retroactivo?
Yes, I want to know in this agenda. He says retroactivo?
Es que el alcalde anda tomando fotos de los homeless.
The mayor is taking pictures of the homeless.
¿Esto es ético?
Is this ethical?
Yo pienso como que no.
I think this is not. And this is Consent Calendar Items Only.
Oh, okay. El étic, el étic, número nueve.
Okay, the ethics, number nine.
Okay. Se necesita que haga real accountability.
There needs to be accountability.
Porque la alcalde está defamando al público.
Because the mayor is defaming the public.
Ella constantemente está hostigando en todos lados.
She is constantly harassing everywhere.
Eternamente se la pasa acostando a la gente.
She is constantly harassing people.
So, se necesita ética verdadera.
There needs to be true ethics.
No este simbolismo que quiere poner la alcalde.
Not just the symbolism that the mayor wants to bring.
Porque ella te pone esta máscara de la bandera.
Because she wears the mask of the flag.
Pero realmente no le importa la Constitución.
But in reality, she doesn't care about the Constitution.
Ella constantemente ataca el First Amendment.
She constantly attacks the First Amendment.
Ha atacado a muchos miembros de la comunidad.
She has attacked many members of the community.
¿Esto es ético? Le pregunto otra vez.
Is that ethical? I ask you again. Thank you. Your time is up.
I have to comment.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Hi, good evening. I wanted to comment on the Code of Ethics. And what I wanted to say about that is that this is very necessary for the city to have. I remind the public that this is a precursor to fraud when the FBI kicks in the doors for these corrupt politicians that we have here, completely putting the business interest and their own personal interests ahead of the people. What they will resort to, or one of the first things they'll request, is going to be that Code of Ethics. And this becomes a way and out for people such as the current council to be able to get away with this type of stuff. On top of that, I'd like to double down on something that has previously been said. Ms. Frometta has constantly violated our constitutional rights and it's just an egregious violation of the Brown Act and our First Amendment rights to have, even on just today's meeting on such short notice, have our time cut to two minutes. The type of stuff cannot continue to go on. And perhaps the Code of Ethics is the necessary measure to go ahead and restrict that. Now, I am curious about who is the person or the group who does get to implement or sit down and actually stipulate what sort of measures are to be included into the Code of Ethics. And so, if you could please clarify that. But on top of, I mean, just to conclude, I mean, please remind the public to not let this go by. The Code of Ethics is extremely important. It is not just a symbolic gesture. It goes beyond that. Thank you. And Frometta, please stop violating our rights. Thank you.
That is all, Mayor.
Thank you, Alicia.
Mayor, I have one announcement in regards to Consent Calendar Item Number Six. In the staff report under the Discussion Section, paragraph three, there's a correction to the dollar amount there. The sentence, the first sentence should read, "During rehabilitation, additional work beyond the original scope of the project resulted in one contract change order totaling $8,178. The final maintenance contract amount was $76,541."
Alicia, can you tell me which one you're referring to?
Yes, this is item number six, Acceptance of Work for Well Number 12, Motor and-
Oh, yes, yes, okay.
So the dollar amount changes from $75,309 to $76,541, which is, the correct amount is listed in the recommendation.
Yes, no, and that's what we have on both. That's what I see on the memo that I have in front of me.
Yes, copies of the corrected Agenda Report were provided to the council and have also been uploaded to the city's website.
I see, I see. Okay, thank you for the correction. I duly noted. Okay, do we have any council member that would like to remove or abstain from any item in the Consent Calendar?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would like to pull out number nine.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Only a second. And City Clerk Duarte, would you please take role?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashton?
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pacheco?
Yes.
And Mayor Frometta?
Yes.
Okay, the Consent Calendar is approved with Councilmember Alvarez pulling item number nine for separate discussion.
Okay, Councilmember Alvarez, the floor is yours. You want to do pull item number nine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So for number nine, I think it's good that we have this item, Code of Ethics and Conduct for Members of the Downey City Council. And I am glad that we are doing it because I was disappointed that we did this for the commissioner before. But we didn't put ourselves before. And everyone can see my vote on that. So I have a few questions about this item and I'm wondering if there's any Code of Ethics for the city's staff as well. And also, I would like to ask why this was a Consent Calendar item and not an administrative item like we did with the commissioners. And lastly, I would like to say that there should have been a universal Code of Ethics for all, not just one or other for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Alvarez. I will attempt to answer a couple of your questions. Number one, in regards to not having it as an administrative report. When we met during our last council meeting, we discussed the Code of Ethics for Commissioners and pretty much the language that we agreed upon to be adopted was going to be the same for the city council members. And so, rather than, you know, taking action at that time, we wanted to make sure that we brought it back and voted on that. So there was no need to spend time reviewing something that was reviewed two weeks ago. Secondly, for elected officials, and again, you know, we looked at other cities to see what they had and we looked at other cities to make sure that, you know, they had what we were looking for. For city staff, we are not employees of the city. We are elected officials. When individuals get hired by any type of organization, they have their own set of policies and codes of conduct that they need to adhere to. And so, we're not here to dictate what city staff should or should not do. We are not the ones that hire the city staff. And so, again, based on the situations that have come before us, including the litigation, we felt that it was necessary at this point in time to make sure, moving forward, and not just for this council, but for future councils, that we establish Code of Ethics and Conduct for our commissioners, board members, anybody that is representing us as council members and is an extension of us in the community. And certainly, as council members, it should go without saying that- that we should, you know, we are to be held to a higher standard. But certainly, I agree with Councilmember Ashton and I think the rest of my colleagues did as well, that we need to, that we needed to bring this forth and ensure that we all agreed for us and future council members, that a Code of Ethics is also adopted. I hope I've answered your questions. I don't know if my colleagues have anything else to add or anybody else.
I'll make a motion to approve this item.
Second. We can get a roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Álvarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashton?
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pacheco?
Yes.
And Mayor Frometta?
Yes.
The motion was approved unanimously.
Thank you. We have three administrative reports this evening. Item number ten is the declaration of the city-owned land as surplus land and the implementation of procedures under the State of California Surplus Land Act. And this is to adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Downey declaring pursuant to Government Code Section 54221 that real property owned by the city located at assessor parcel number six-two-five-five dash zero-zero-two-dash-nine-zero-zero is surplus land and not necessary for the city's use, authorizing the city manager to comply with the procedures under the Surplus Land Act and finding procedures under the Surplus Land Act and finding that such declaration and authorization is exempt from environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act. City Manager Levas, who is giving the report for number, item number ten?
Madam Mayor, we're gonna have our community development director, Aldo Schindler, come up and give you a presentation on this item.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schindler.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Before we discuss the.
Before, before Mr. Schindler starts, I just want to say for the record that I have to declare conflict on this item as I own commercial property within five hundred feet of this subject property. Thank you.
Thank you once again, Madam Mayor and Council. Before we jump into what the Surplus Land Act is, I wanted to give some brief background as to what brought us here tonight. So on the screen, we have an aerial of the corner of Firestone and Dolan, specifically where the former Denny's site is located and adjacent to the west, the Dollar Tree and Grocery Outlet stores. Highlighted in yellow is land that's owned by the city. Those are parking lots. Those are parking lots that are used almost exclusively by the former Denny's patrons and the patrons of the grocery outlet and the Dollar Tree. The Denny's site, their lease expired. There we go. Thank you. Sorry about the pause. The lease at the former Denny's site expired in December of 2019. The property ownership at that site changed hands last year. The current owner approached staff recently and was interested in buying the portion of property that's in front of the Denny's site, and that's the portion that's highlighted in blue. So only that site that he was interested in purchasing. So for obvious reasons, the owner wanted to control the parking that's in front of his building and behind his building to give him a better opportunity to lease the site to a new use. The owner is looking to lease the site to a new restaurant or some retail. He hasn't determined what that best use is, but it's gonna pretty much remain consistent to what's out there now. And so as we started to do our research in regards to proceeding with negotiations with that property owner, we came across the state's new Surplus Land Act. On the screen now, we have a street view of that Denny's site for your reference also. In regards of the Surplus Land Act, it's a new assembly bill that was signed by the governor in October of 2019 and effective as of January first of last year. The goal is to provide affordable housing developers the first opportunity to bid on any properties that are being sold by cities. So what cities need to do is they need to declare their land is surplus land, as we're doing tonight. The definition of surplus land is land that's not needed by the city, therefore it's for sale for private use. Another category is exempt surplus land. A city may take an action to classify land as exempt, but that land needs to be encumbered by tools that have covenants attached to them. So a disposition and development agreement, an exclusive negotiating agreement, or a lease with a right of first refusal or other covenants. Properties that have those types of covenants are seen as exempt and cities would also have to classify them if they wanted to proceed in the future with the transaction. So based on that, the city needs to offer this land as surplus land to entities that build affordable housing or for open space or for parks. Now, that site in question is small. It's twelve thousand five hundred square feet. So it may be challenging for somebody to build anything on it exclusively. And also where it's located lends itself to more of a retail commercial use. Also, if council approves the resolution tonight, staff must produce a written notice to distribute to the affordable housing entities that are on the State of California's Housing Community Development Database. That sample letter is included as Exhibit Eight in your resolution. And so if one or more affordable housing entities do respond, we need to engage them in negotiations. The state allows for up to ninety days to negotiate with these entities. And so we do have to enter into those types of transactions. If no one replies within sixty days, then on the sixty-first day, we can go back to the former Denny's property owner and then engage in negotiations on that transaction. Regardless of how we proceed, we're gonna apprise the council. We'll apprise the council on the sixty-first day. We'll apprise the council if somebody contacts us in terms of wanting to negotiate an affordable housing product there. And then we'll go through the traditional exercises with council about how we proceed with negotiating with any party. In regards to next steps, the first one once again is the council's approval of staff's recommendation to allow us to proceed with the processes under the Surplus Land Act. The first one would be is we'd notify the approximately hundred and sixty-nine entities on the state's database. And if we get any hits, we'd enter into some negotiations with them or at least better explain what that property's value is or what its utility is. If nobody responds within sixty days, on that sixty-first day, we go back to the former Denny's site. And once again, along the way, we're going to apprise the council of each step along with this process. That concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions that you might have.
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Aldo. Again, it's unfortunate that we have to do this, but we have to comply. Council colleagues, do you have anything? Okay, Councilmember Álvarez, do you have any thoughts or comments regarding the surplus land presentation?
No, no, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, before we move forward, I would like to just make an announcement. Exhibit Eight to the resolution was urgently omitted from the staff report due to a copy error.
What was omitted?
The Exhibit Eight to the resolution. So you have been provided copies of the dais and we have also uploaded copies of the Exhibit Eight to the city's website.
Okay, thank you for making that announcement, City Clerk. I appreciate that. Okay, now I will open this item for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the council regarding item number eleven may now call our teleconference line at five-six-two-two-nine-nine-six-six-two-two. Each speaker will have two minutes to address the council regarding item number eleven. For those who submitted comments via email, your comments will be read into the record and no further public comment via teleconference will be permitted. City Clerk Duarte, did we receive any written correspondence about this item?
We did not, Mayor.
Okay, do we have any speakers on the phone?
Yes, Mayor, we have one call.
Hello? Hello? Talk about the parking lot? Surplus land? Can you hear me? Mommy? Yes, okay. Um, your streaming went down, mommy. So I was able to watch and listen to puppets speak, but they're fucking there. So you guys are fucking up the ability to hear and talk an important matter.
I need you to please stay on topic or you will be disconnected. Thank you.
I know, but this is exactly this item the FBI needs to look at, mommy, because you're giving away valuable multimillion-dollar parcels and calling it surplus. Surplus is a spin and then for shit. This isn't shit. This is just your big fat mayor giving their big fat developer buddies a big fucking break. And you took down the Zoom, you took down the YouTube channel because you gotta fucking hide. You know, you, you should be fucking put in a fucking penitentiary for shit like this. You could build a tiny homes. You could house homeless people on that lot. But now, you have to give it to your developer buddies because that's who you work for. You're not an employee. You're an employee of fucking developers. Make this a homeless shelter or a safe parking space for the ninety-four thousand fucking homeless.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Mr. Schindler on a prize, please. Regarding the eight-three-five-six Firestone Boulevard property located at the old Denny's that was shut down. Mommy Frometta, you have to allow us to have our surplus land for homelessness. Otherwise, we aren't gonna get upset with Gavin recall vote. We have to get Gavin upset and re-vote yes to recall jackass Gavin Newsom. Trujillo is property of retail and nearby stores of retail. No one really fucking cares about the faggot. God hates homosexuals, mommy. A tolerance for homosexuality, God hates. And goddamn bless America.
Mr. Herman, please stay on topic or we will disconnect.
Well, I'm talking about the Surplus Land Act. It's not an act. It's about corruption. And you know, why the fuck are we gonna be giving our property away for little or nothing to the dollar? Yeah, you dumb bitch, put the fucking computer on.
Please disconnect.
Do we have any more calls?
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking. Hello, please state your name and begin speaking. This is item number ten.
Yes, on item number ten. So I agree that, you know, the city should actually be looking at, you know, like why, why just like, oh, give up this land? Why can't there be a tiny home area built there, you know? There's been talk about affordable housing and about the unhoused population. Well, the mayor of actually L.A. and other cities are building tiny homes for like ten thousand dollars. That doesn't seem like a lot. And this land to be used for that, why are you not immediately going to that potential use of the land? You know, why you're not even bringing it up in this report? You know, the people, the unhoused people need this land, which is in a, you know, there's a lot of unhoused people at this area. So why don't you use it for tiny homes? You know, that's an immediate solution to the suffering that people have on the streets. You know, people don't like being on the streets. They don't want their stuff taken away from them, like the mayor has advocated. But, so this land should be used for the people. It shouldn't be used for other purposes. You know, we have an immediate purpose. The land should be used for tiny homes or other resources for the homeless. You know, that should be your number one priority for this land. This land deserves to be, you know, used. The people of Downey, there's a lot of talk out there that the unhoused are not from Downey. That's blatantly unfalse. So this land belongs to the people of Downey who have been paying taxes for a very long time. It should be used, the land should be used to help the people of Downey, especially those that are down on their luck.
Thank you, your time is up. Hello, please state your name and begin speaking. This is item number ten.
Yes, I just wanna say a couple of things. As the previous speakers have mentioned, and it's because people recognize homelessness is an issue and we have this property that just doesn't seem to be meeting the immediate needs that our community is facing. Right now, we have under six thousand homes that we need to build for a growing population. Why was this property not considered for that? It seems these are not the first things that these individuals think about is community members and people who are in need. Right now, the Gateway Cog is going to do a freeway expansion that's gonna remove homes from the third and fourth district, including the elementary school. It seems every time that we look at what Downey is doing with our property, like this one, for example, it's only benefiting developers and people who are connected already. And as you can see, the homeless people and the people in need will continue to keep getting screwed. And not only that, we're now at the point where the mayor even has the city manager steal people's property and violating their Fourteenth Amendment. So the city is backwards and it's backwards because of people like Mayor. Thank you.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Hi, good evening. I'd like to speak on what we're talking about here, this issue of surplus land. I mean, the city in itself in this precise meeting has stated that we're, that one of the biggest conflicts in regards to being able to, you know, find affordable housing solutions is the fact that we lack land to appropriately use for that purpose. And so for the city to then be able to say that we have surplus land here to go ahead and transfer onto private hands and private entities, which in no way whatsoever even remotely constitutes a possibility of any, any normal person being able to obtain them. Meaning they just go on to more wealthy people, more business interests and all that. It is just egregious. So how is it that we can complain about not having enough land to meet the quota for the demand of new construction for housing and all this? And this is just one example. When at the same time, the city is trying to get rid of and is actively ridding itself of public land and transferring it onto public, private hands. So that is just an egregious violation, I think. And, you know, we're scarce on that side. We're scarce of public land and for you guys to just go ahead and hand it off once again to the highest bidder is just a demonstration of where the values of the current council land and where they are. And it's just honestly a direct insult to the public. It shouldn't be accepted. It shouldn't be tolerated. It shouldn't be accepted. It shouldn't be tolerated. It's unacceptable, especially considering.
Thank you. Time is up. Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Oh, yes. David Bowers down in California. I believe we're speaking about the surplus land that your, the act is about, that you're looking to negotiate with someone to sell to them. I would hope that is what is being discussed. Because I hear a lot of people talking about putting houses there. I held meetings at that restaurant every month for a long period of time before I moved it to another location and now another location. And I don't think you could really, I don't think people even in tiny homes would wanna live on that piece of land right there. So that's essentially my comment. I, I understand that maybe there's some spaces that could be found someplace for what people are looking for and asking about. But, um, I, I don't think that's the right piece of property. And like I said, I assume that when it says negotiate, you're gonna negotiate and get some money for the sale of surplus land. Um, that's, that's my only comment and have a good evening.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Hi, my name is Alex and I just wanted to voice my support for having this area become surplus land use. Uh, Downey has exceptionally high arena numbers this year. And in order to make good on arena numbers, uh, we need to make sure that we're exploring every possible avenue for providing chances for affordable housing to be developed. And I think it's also crucial that in part of not just finding land to be redeveloped for affordable housing, that the city council also reconsideres, considers other efforts to bring down the cost of housing, such as eliminating parking requirements within such a downtown, within the downtown area that is connected by via transit. Uh, also, and we are on the brink of environmental collapse. And the only thing that's gonna make it worse for us is if we continue to provide space for cars and not people. Uh, so I think it, I strongly encourage like the city council to like, uh, explore more options for allowing affordable housing to be developed within Downey because of arena numbers. But also in pursue other options that would bring down the cost of housing, such as eliminating parking requirements and other, uh, building requirements that make it more expensive to build, which therefore reduces the amount of housing that can be built. Uh, also, Downey is ripe for redevelopment and turn making it a dense, walkable city, uh, which is something that I would also like to see the city council, uh, consider. Thank you.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Hi, um, this is Via. I'm sorry, um, I'll be right there. Um, I, I caught it here in the middle of the, of your, uh, agenda. I think you're on agenda ten. Is that correct? Okay, um, it's, um, I don't know where to start. Let me, let me, let me think really quickly. I've only got a two-minute break here. Um, you guys open up, um, and you speak on humanity. And you ask for the dear Lord's guidance for answers. I- is that not correct, Mayor? Okay, yeah, I, I, I get you can't answer.
Um, this is agenda item number ten.
Correct. This is about the surplus. Um, are we on the same subject? The surplus land?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm working my way to it. Um, I don't even know how much time you're giving tonight, but, um, I, I don't understand. The answer here is smacking you right in the face. Um, a surplus land, the city should always put forward existing land to affordable housing. Um, tonight, um, I assume because I hear callers calling in that there was a, a subject of, um, homelessness and the unhoused. So why aren't we accommodating the unhoused? Why aren't we resolving this? What, the answer is here. I, I just, you know, are, why are we deemed it necessary for commercial use? Is mind-boggling. I mean, I don't know. I hope Catherine Alvarez speaks up on this or your council member agreeing not to vote or, or delay the vote on this. Um, I don't know the particulars, but, um, again, existing surplus land, especially for Downey, should always go towards the affordable housing. And that is on your agenda tonight, affordable housing. So I hope you consider it again and do the right thing. Put Downey on the map.
Thank you. Your time is up. That is all, Mayor.
Thank you, City Clerk Duarte. Uh, are there any comments from, uh, this council regarding item number ten? If not, I will.
I, I'd like to just try to clarify some comments. So from, from what I'm hearing, I, I've heard a lot about like putting tiny homes on this lot. So I don't know if that, I mean, I, I like the, I generally like the idea of tiny homes. Like I think that's a good start to help with doing something along these lines. I, I'm just not comfortable with knowing if that's the right spot for it. I don't know if that's big enough to put homes there like that. And, and I just wanted to, you know, I, I'm not a engineer. I don't deal with that type of stuff. I deal with policy. However, I do need to ask our, our staff, you know, approximately, how big is that parking lot again? I just wanna get this out there.
Councilmember Ashton, the site is twelve thousand five hundred square feet. It, it's a small site and wouldn't be able to accommodate a tiny home project.
So even if we squoze as many or made it just one or two and tried to do it, you don't, in your opinion, it wouldn't work?
Sure. It, the challenge is, is all the surrounding infrastructure that comes with, with the pallet houses. Uh, we've, uh, communicated with the pallet house company, specifically with their design experts and their marketing people to explore the topic as well theoretically. And they, they carry with it quite a bit of infrastructure that requires more, more land than what's available there.
Not, not, not only that, but you also have an adjacent business that you have to provide some buffer between the, 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 uh, commercial uses and the homes that would potentially be in there. So it's infrastructure, the buffer between, you know, how do people access that particular area? Uh, you know, how, so tho- those are the air. If that was a sliver of twelve thousand square feet of land in an area that was adjacent to, let's say, um, uh, another residential area or somewhere where there were other businesses that you can go right up to the property line, uh, with zero lot lines, then you could potentially do, you know, some, some housing. But in this particular area, it really doesn't lend itself to, to much just because it's so limited in space.
And then one of the question that was brought up by some of the callers was, you know, that we're just trying to give it to somebody. So I, I don't, as I read through this, I, I see that, that we're putting, that we're making notice of this and we're sending a letter as required by Government Code Section five-four-two-two-zero, basically saying that we have to give notice to, uh, businesses that are approved by the state to do affordable housing to see, hey, is there something you can possibly do with this? And we're giving that notice before we do anything else.
That's correct.
Okay, so basically we're doing our best effort to try to do what we can with this property. If there's somebody that has an ability to do a, a, a type of affordable housing on that site, we'll hear.
That, that's correct.
Okay. That, that's, that's all that I have. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, put them. Councilmember Alvarez, comments or questions regarding this item, the California Surplus Land Act?
No, we just gotta wait for the results and see if, um, we can build something, um, for the community and their itself for affordable housing. We just gotta wait. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, again, I think, uh, Councilmember Ashton, uh, he, you clarified, I think, some of the callers misunderstood what it is we're trying to do. The, the governor, um, through Assembly Bill one-four-eight-six, uh, effective January first, twenty-twenty, um, you know, is, is mandating that we use whatever land we have and we offer it up to any affordable housing companies to do what they can. Now, if we don't receive, uh, uh, any, any notification that that, uh, or any company within, you know, sixty days, day sixty-one, then that land, uh, is offered for sale or lease. So again, I think we, we are doing, uh, our part. We also have to be cognizant that as we look at space and areas, um, Mr. Schindler and City Manager Levas, you brought up a very good point. We need to think about the, the surrounding infrastructure that has to go in place with any affordable housing project. So that is, um, something to keep in mind. Um, I will now entertain a motion to adopt, uh, this resolution.
Make the motion.
A second.
Uh, City Clerk Duarte, would you please take role?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashton?
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo is excused. Uh, Mayor Patem Pacheco?
Yes.
And Mayor Frometa?
Yes.
The motion is approved with Councilmember Trujillo excused.
And we are.
Abstaining, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Can we call? Okay, thank you. Okay, moving along, uh, on our agenda, we have item number eleven. Uh, discuss holding a Downey Pride family picnic. Councilmember Alvarez, uh, you asked for this item to be placed on the agenda. Um, please proceed.
So, um, I request, um, to, for staff to look into this and, and I, I believe, I don't know if they have done it or not, but I just want, uh, to let the community and the city know that the city is not paying for anything on behalf of the old GBT family event. I'm just requesting the city to grant the permits and waive permits fees and also request the Department of Parks and Recreation to help in this matter. Um, and also I want to ask the staff to provide assistance and we will pay them back for their work. Um, so I don't know if another, um, colleague of, of mine wants to talk about a little bit about it, but I, this is what I really, I'm really requesting into it. It's just, um, help to structure something for that day.
What, if I can ask, uh, Councilmember Alvarez, when you say, yeah, help in structuring that day, would you, would you clarify, uh, what you mean by that?
Yes, it's more likely, um, um, asking staff and see how much do, uh, we're gonna be spending on, uh, maybe on, on food. Uh, what is, uh, we have to do to actually bring food to this event? You know, those type of things because I have seen that Park and Break have done before events. And I believe it has been asked to the staff to actually guide them. So this is what I'm requesting in here.
Madam Mayor, if I can, um, we can go ahead and, we can go ahead and clarify some of those issues. So we, we have prepared a, a staff report that will, you know, shed some light and give you all direction. I think, uh, actually, Councilmember Alvarez has already, already indicated, you know, where, how it would be paid for. So that's probably, that's, you know, most of the issue, right? So, um, but we can, we can, uh, give you a presentation in terms of, I, I think the parameters that Councilmember Alvarez had discussed was, uh, a thousand people, um, uh, to, to hold the picnic for a thousand people and see what that would cost. Um, and we've done that homework and so we, we can, we can go ahead and, uh, present that. Um, it, it's not a, a significant amount of money. So, uh, certainly, you know, if, um, you know, Councilmember Alvarez is, has the ability to, um, to raise that money, that certainly makes it, you know, that much easier. But, uh, with that said, I'll bring up Vanya and she can go ahead and, uh, give you a presentation in terms of other cities and what they do and kind of best practices out there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levas. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. So at the last city council meeting, staff was asked to research the possibility of holding a Downey Pride family picnic on Saturday, June twenty-sixth from twelve to four PM as a result of the governor recently announcing the goal of reopening the economy on June fifteenth. So staff was specifically asked to research, uh, the foreseeable restrictions, uh, for gatherings in late June, recommendations for a site and also a proposed budget for approximately a thousand people. And on, and among that, things also included were showmobile, um, staffing, organizing, entertaining activities for families similar to the Easter and Halloween events. It was mentioned, and provide hamburgers, hot dogs, chips and sodas. Um, so to provide clarification on the first item, foreseeable restrictions for gatherings in late June. So on April sixth, the governor did state he plans to reopen the state economy and lift the state's tiered system, also known as a blueprint for a safer economy, contingent on vaccine availability, hospitalization cases remaining stable and other health measures remaining in place. Currently, the state of California's COVID-nineteen case rate is among the nation's lowest and appears to be on track to meet that goal. However, while the state may allow reopenings, counties have the authority to impose more restrictive mandates as deemed necessary. As such, it is difficult to predict gathering guidelines for June. Um, but we were able to pull up what the current health order guidelines are for gatherings as of April fifteenth. So there are three major categories, live events and performances. And live event performances are for events with audiences and have specific seating. That's, um, only available to happen outdoors for thirty-three percent maximum occupancy. Then there's private events and this is for tickets, reservations, guest lists. The outdoor private events limited to maximum of a hundred people or three hundred people if all guests are, um, tested negative for COVID-nineteen or show proof of full vaccination. If the event is outdoors and has fifty people or less that are fully vaccinated, no masks are required. Indoor private events permitted only if all guests test negative for COVID-nineteen or show proof of vaccination. Indoor events are limited to a maximum of a hundred and fifty people. If the event is indoors and has twenty-five people or less that are fully vaccinated, masks are not required. The third category is informal social gatherings. This requirement is specific for gatherings defined as social situations that bring people together from different households at the same time in a single space or, um, place. Outdoor gatherings at this time is maximum to fifty people. Indoor gatherings are highly discouraged. Singing, cheering, some activities are not allowed. Um, you have to maintain six feet of distance, mask at all time, and the gathering should not be more than two hours. So based on the above protocols, even though at this time it could change, as previously mentioned, we can go into the less restrictive tier, um, or we have just continually monitoring to see what LA County says. But based on those protocols, the Downey Pride family picnic would fall under the informal social gathering, meaning it would be limited to fifty people outside. Additionally, the event would only be two hours and certain events or activities like live entertainment would not be allowed. When reviewing possible sites, Apollo and Furman Park were considered, um, or as best options for it. Really, um, things to consider along with those is that Apollo Park, while it has many picnic shelters and reduces need for setup and helps with the six feet of social distancing and has ample parking. It does have a lot of programming. So if an event were to take place, we would need to close down the, uh, programming that are on the park at the site. Furman Park is kind of the opposite situation. It contains limited picnic shelters and does not have as much parking, but it doesn't have so many programs. So if you were to have an event, it wouldn't conflict. In regards for a budget for a thousand patrons, um, as our staff looked at the two events mentioned, so Brunch with the Bunny, that goes from nine-thirty to twelve-thirty, so about three hours, and it's for seven hundred to eight hundred people. The total budget cost for that event is five thousand dollars. So this includes a petting zoo, crafts, games, entertainment and parks and recreation staff. Um, the event also offers pancakes that are provided by local Boy Scout troop. I do wanna note though that patrons have to pay ten dollars for the pancake breakfast and then they do go inside Golden Park Auditorium to watch a show. There's two show times to go along with it. Separately for the Pumpkin Patch or the Halloween event, it's from five to nine PM, so four hours. And there's about ten thousand people that attend that event. Total budget cost is sixteen thousand five hundred. And this includes things as supplies, decorations, candy, family activities, chairs, generators, marketing booths, parks and recreation, police and public works staff. There is no food provided at this event. However, there is two committee, um, community service groups that provide free snacks for patrons. Um, I also wanna note that while for these particular events, it does take a minimum three months to start planning them in advance, um, from city staff perspective. Also, some other things that were asked is showmobile to cost about eight hundred dollars for public works or transport and to set up and, uh, take down. Um, in regards to the food, for estimate cost for hamburgers, hot dogs, chips and drinks, um, all the different utensils and cleaning things and also protective, um, materials that we need and equipment for serving were estimated about four thousand five hundred, but as mentioned, this could be sponsored. Um, for efficiency sake, um, there could be a vendor hired to provide the food, about six thousand five hundred is what we're estimating. Uh, for part, for staffing of staff, um, for about the four-hour time range, again, um, the event would be. Uh, for part, for staffing of staff, um, for about the four hour time range, again, um, the event would be limited to two hours, so by going with the four hours, um, it could range from two thousand five hundred to five thousand dollars depending on staffing needs. Um, and then also just lastly in relation to this, we did research other cities that do hold LGBTQ events and they all are owned, um, or operated by nonprofit organizations. So these nonprofits come to the city with their plans, organizations, activities, and it goes through a permitting process. Um, and any cost of city staff is actually covered by the nonprofit organization. Um, and that concludes my, um, presentation. I hope to answer any questions that you may have.
My council colleagues, uh, do you have questions or comments?
Really quick, so, um, wait. And may, I, maybe this is for, for my colleagues really, if anything, but, um, I, I, I know that June is more of the symbolic month for Pride Month. Uh, I, I'm still kind of concerned that, that it's a touch early considering, you know, we're still kind of dealing with the pandemic and in theory it should open up by July fifteenth, but you know, that's, I mean, to, to plan something at the end of, I'm sorry, end of June, June fifteenth, excuse me, June fifteenth, and then to plan something June twenty-third, it, it seems kind of tight. It, it really does, and, and not that I'm against. I mean, I'm looking forward to this. I think it'll be a good event. I, I'm, again, my concern, this is the concern I brought up when we talked about it the last time, is just how, how safe it'll be considering the, the pandemic. Um, like, I would be open to, to seeing if we could do this later in the, in the summer, possibly, and I don't know how that would feel to my colleagues. But to me, I, I think doing it later in the summer, it, it's not during, you know, Pride Month and, and that's unfortunate. But I think the idea is doing it. I, I think ultimately, if we do have this event, I think it's gonna be a good event that'll be a successful event and it, it'll it'll do what it's intended, which is just to bring awareness. I, I, I just, I, I'm just concerned about doing it so close to when the governor says everything's gonna be open and, and not being sure if that's actually gonna be. So, you know, my, my suggestion would be, you know, maybe push it back towards the, you know, middle to end of summer. It gives staff more time to help with planning. It gives organizers more time to help with planning and it gives us more time to, to know where we're gonna be at. You know, on, once we get closer to June and July.
Thank you. Uh, oh, go ahead, Madam Mayor Potem.
I just want to add, or, or echo, uh, Sean's, uh, comments. Uh, my concern is like Sean's, uh, Councilmember Ashton, is that, uh, we're still not through this pandemic. Uh, whether we reopen in June, it's still a what-if. It looks more than likely that we will, but it's still, if we continue to doing, continue doing what we're doing, our numbers, uh, continue to remain low, uh, which so far they are, but it's so hard to plan something on a what-if. So, um, it's not that I'm against having this, I'm more concerned about if we're able to reopen and also planning. It just makes it so much more difficult when you can't, when you can't plan it because you're dealing with a what-if kind of situation. Uh, so I would prefer to see this event being held at a later time, once we get more clarification from the state and even more importantly, from, uh, the county, which we're under L.A. County.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Potem. You know, I think we all agree that we support events that bring inclusion. Um, we are a community that prides itself on being Downey strong. On, you know, our hashtag is Downey Cares, Downey Strong, um, uniting force. Um, all of these different hashtags, and I think that, um, our community as a whole is stronger because of our differences and our differences of opinion, our differences of culture, our differences of color, our differences of thought, our differences of religion. But having said all this, um, we, as a globe, have endured the most challenging time of our lifetime. In fact, many of the same callers we have during non-agenda public comment, agenda, public comment, they constantly criticize our city about not reopening, not having or wearing masks or not wearing masks or hugging people or not hugging people and so on and so forth. So I, I want to also not be cavalier and not move forward so fast in sponsoring an event. Um, and, and again, we've indicated and I have been very clear with my council colleagues and with the community in saying we have to be very thoughtful, uh, in our budgeting and, and I have said, um, as long as the city and, and the tax, our, our taxpayers' dollars, um, are not funding this. Just some weeks ago, this council did not approve, uh, a cultural trip that was in the amount of, I believe, twenty-seven hundred dollars because it was too much in the optics of it. So again, we looked at funding and then we look at now the most important item that we're discussing, and that is how safe is this? And so I have to echo what has been said. We can't be too cavalier. Um, our city library, everybody in the community has been wanting to come in and enjoy this new space. And so we can't just say, let's move forward with this, let's forget that we've, that we've lost thousands of lives, um, that again, somebody mentioned earlier during the call, uh, we're nearing forty percent vaccination rate in the city of Downey. So, you know, we can't be speaking through both sides of our mouth, right? Um, so I, I want us to be very thoughtful. Um, I don't think this particular time, um, the, the timing is, is not right for this event in light of, you know, we, we don't, we haven't yet decided too. The people keep asking us, what about the concerts in the park? Where are we with that? So there's still a lot of, there's still a lot of question marks on a lot of the programming that, that we have for the future, so we have to be thoughtful.
You know, can I, can I just?
Yes.
If I can, I, I'm just trying to, for art, for staff purposes, I just want some, some clarification. It sounds like we're all, um, okay with the, with the, um, with the picnic going forward. It's just the, the date, right? Is that what we're talking? And so?
I, I, I also, um, um, I support providing the space. Um, I don't support having, uh, our taxpayers foot the bill. That's, that's where I'm at.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just trying to, trying to put it, I'm just trying to put it a bow around this because I'm, I need to figure this out so that we can get the staff to, uh, to move forward and not move forward and what we're doing. So my, my understanding is that if, uh, according to Councilmember Alvarez, they have the ability to, to fundraise it and, and pay for it, so, so that's one. So assuming that's put aside and assuming that the, I, the item is kicked off to, uh, a date further down the road, then those are the two issues, as, as I un-understand them, right?
And then I just want to clarify that, um, would we be okay with waiving fees for like the showmobile and permit fees as well? Would that be? I, I'm, I'm asking my colleagues that because that's, because I think that was the other ask.
So, um, first and foremost, I want to thank, uh, Councilmember Catherine Alvarez for raising the issue of um, having a Downey Pride event in the city where I've lived for the last thirty years. I've met with several residents who want a pride event. We had a couple of committee meetings. Um, we were invited to Whittier Pride, their planning, uh, meeting. I want to thank Councilmember Henry Bouchot from the city of Whittier. He reached out and said, um, let me know how we can help, you know, we've gone through this. They were kind enough to invite us and, um, found out that L.A. Cada, which we already support, is their nonprofit that puts on their event, just like city staff mentioned, usually it's a nonprofit that will put it on. Um, L.A. Cada says absolutely they're on board. They will help us do this, just like they've done for Whittier. They have a track record of doing it and Downey Chamber, uh, reached out and they're, um, happy to assist based on their experience with, I think it's the street fair. They do a couple of big events in the city. Um, had a conversation with Supervisor Han's office. Uh, they, they are, uh, being very supportive. Uh, I don't have any guarantees, but it sounds like they would hopefully support financially the event. So been doing some homework in this area, and, and let me start by saying that I don't think anybody's gonna violate any county ordinance or CDC violations. I don't think that anybody's proposing that. The fact of the matter is we are moving into the yellow tier. Um, what exactly does the yellow tier mean?
Well, they haven't released exactly what that breakdown would be, but ultimately we're just increasing the capacity that would be allowed at the sites.
So, obviously, we have the county regulations and then we have CDC regulations, which, which we absolutely must follow. I don't think there's one council member that would advocate for a violation of any county regulation. I mean, that would just be wrong, right? So, I, I, I want to make a motion that the city, support this event by allowing this nonprofit, L.A. Cada, to use a park. I don't know what program he's already instituted for June twenty-sixth, but I know that sports for a while were not being scheduled. So if, if they get in early, if the nonprofit decides that June twenty-sixth is doable, right, then hopefully there's not a lot of programming that we're gonna impact on June twenty-sixth.
Um, the Parks and Recreation does work with the athletic, athletic teams right now because they do, there is a permit process right now. So some of them are, are doing conditioning and starting to play games, so there could be conflicts. Um, it may not be as much as like pre-pandemic, but there will be some.
So, um, obviously we have to consider programming because this event, like any event that the city is gonna participate in, should be as least disruptive to the city, to the residents, to the programming already in place. My motion, uh, will make it clear that the city is not to support financially the event. Is not to be expected to support financially the event, uh, except for the waiver of the fees, if you will, uh, the permits, uh, whatever they need for this park. The insurance would have to be obtained by the nonprofit. We're not expecting the city to pick up the insurance, so it's allow the use of the park and waive the, the permit fees for this park use. It are the only two things that this, uh, motion entails. And we would not use the city stage or mobile stage, whatever it's called, the showmobile. The police department and the fire department would be invited to display a, a truck. Maybe a couple of our patrol vehicles for the kids to take pictures with. It's always a nice photo op for kids and encourages relationships between, um, children, youth and law enforcement to see the city there. Or at least a vehicle. Um, and it doesn't have to be police officers or it could be city aides or something. Any use of staff time would be reimbursed. Okay, if the nonprofit needs any assistance from the city, whether it's advice or, or putting the event together, the city will get reimbursed. They're to submit, uh, an invoice for reimbursement of that staff time. I believe that the biggest concern would be the timing. So my motion would be that, that we approve, uh, this event under those conditions. I don't know if I missed anything.
If, if I may, I think, you know, June, a- as, as we've indicated, uh, the rest of the council colleagues, is still too soon. I think we need to, you know, consider all, all that we've discussed, um, and, and look at this event for a later time, um, you know, whether it's late July or August to really allow for A, uh, additional vaccinations in our city and B, to really, um, be, be, uh, more thoughtful, uh, about the reopening of it all.
I had a question. Are there any cities that are, are planning any events that we, we know of?
Um, no, actually, that, that's the big, you know, everybody's kind of in a holding pattern right now. And, and the challenge for us from staff perspective is, um, we don't, you know, it takes us two to three months to, to get ready, and actually, two to three months is actually quick. Uh, many of our events, we plan a year in advance, six months to a year in advance. Um, so a, a lot of it is kind of wait and see because we're, we're all kind of looking into a crystal ball, you know, what's, you know, what's the opening gonna look like? What's the capacity's gonna look like? And what I always want to do as a city manager is manage expectations, right? I want the most successful. If we're gonna have a, a, a pride picnic, picnic, I want it to go off without a hitch, right? I want it to be a, a really successful. I just don't know. I mean, we're talking really about a month and a half, two months, you know, to, to, to plan it all, to get it all together. I just don't know where we're gonna be, that's all.
So, what I was going to say, what I was going to say is, and I would like L.A. Cada to come give us a report at the next council meeting, right? Uh, for them to tell us what, we'll see what we're at in two weeks, and they may say that the best thing is in August. But I would like to have this approved today.
So I, I just want to say something really quick, um, because I know, uh, the mayor and I, we were involved in the Girls on Fire, uh, program. On that program, we probably started planning like, Vanya, maybe?
Only January.
January, and the event was in July. So we wanted it to, it to be a huge success because for us, it was about women empowerment and that was important for us. Uh, so we planned this event, we were able to get, um, secure some funding. So we did a lot of work behind the scenes before we even brought it to the, the council. Uh, so I want to see this event as a huge success, I think, like my, my council colleagues, um, do. It's just really hard given that, uh, we don't, we have so many what-ifs and I don't, haven't heard any city that's planning anything. We haven't planned our concerts in the park. And, um, like Councilmember Ashton even mentioned, he said, well, maybe is it possible to have it on a later date? I mean, I don't even know if that's even possible.
We've, we've discussed the Girls on Fire event, um, that was not able to be held in twenty-twenty and we're still not, uh, for sure because of these reopenings. And so I, you know, I, I don't feel comfortable, um, supporting a motion for, for this event to take place in June, given the current circumstances and given everything that has been discussed. I think, you know, moving it to, uh, later in the summer, uh, when we have a better idea of how the reopening is, I think, you know, we are being more thoughtful and, and, and more responsible.
So, uh, Councilmember Trujillo, I know you're in the process of making a motion. I, I'd like to hear it.
Okay, so, um, but, but Mayor Potem Pacheco raises a good point. What are the what-ifs? Besides the date, you know, what the county's going to allow, are there other what-ifs? Okay, so the only what-if is a date.
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, can I, just, just a second. I, one of the other things, if, if, um, the date is the what-if, right, but it's bigger. We just want to make sure that we pick a date because there are all these, um, sports leagues that are out there. I want to make sure that there's, we, we pick a date that, uh, kind of fits in there because you have A, AYSO, you have, um, Cal South, you have DGA, you have all these groups out there. We want to pick a date so that, uh, everybody can live in harmony out there for that, for those two or three hours. That's it. That's my only caveat.
Okay. So here's my motion then. I move that we approve, uh, the Downey Pride Family Picnic that is to be coordinated by L.A. Cada along with assistance from the Downey Chamber, Supervisor Han's office and our city staff. That the city will only support the event by allowing use of the park and waiving permit fees for the use of the park with a date to be determined by the city staff along with L.A. Cada in compliance by the city staff along with LA Cada in compliance with CDC guidelines. And I would like LA Cada to come before us at our next council meeting to discuss the work that they are going to start doing with the city and where they're at with a date, if they have a recommendation. They may not have a recommendation and date on that time, but again, I would like the city staff and LA Cada to come up with dates for us to consider, hopefully, in two weeks, if not in the future.
You know, I I think I I I don't want to have LA Cada be the responsible party in deciding what day. I think that is incumbent upon us uh as a city and as a council to make that determination based on, yes, we can receive recommendations, but it it is up to this council, we are the governing body of this city, to decide what is best for our community in terms of, you know, the guidelines. And so while while I I will certainly appreciate uh LA Cada being the the nonprofit partner, I think that ultimately, the decision come but needs to come back.
I agree.
Yeah, I think that was in the motion, though, because with, you know, basically, we're making the decision, but we're getting extra input from LA Cada, we're getting input from our staff. I I I don't see an issue with it. I'll second that motion.
I'll second that.
I'll I'll defer my second, Catherine. I mean, I I I know this is an event that I feel everybody on council is behind. I mean, just just the event, we're all behind it. Our issue is when? And we're not gonna do anything that's going to be be counterintuitive to what we know is is the right thing to do. And and in the motion, I believe uh Councilmember Trillo addressed that. I feel that he has said, like, this, our our per- in a perfect world, we'd do it on the twenty sixth of June. But we're willing to look at other dates, working with city staff to make sure we have availability at one of our parks, or even, you know, what if we did it on the rooftop, the the parking structure? I mean, we could do it there. I mean, we've done events there. I don't know cost wise or whatever, but parking is right below that you can have everything up top, and it'd be a fun event there, too, just like we do the the uh the rooftop, the the nighttime rooftop event. I'm sure that'd be fun, too. But my po- my point being is we can figure out a way to do this. We can get input from other organizations, especially if they're used to planning these things. We can get input from them, but we'll make the final decision, because we have to. That's that's who we're the council. We do make that. And and that's covered in the motion, I believe.
Yeah, I'll second the motion. So uh can we, instead of of making a full motion like that, can we just uh hear from LA Cada and get more information from them? I just, I don't feel comfortable making a motion that uh, you know, city will have city staff uh involved instead of, like, wasting uh staff time and energy. Maybe what we need to do is maybe we need to hear from LA LA Cada to see what they had in mind. Uh maybe we can get some input as to what's going on in Whittier. Uh because I do like the idea of having the event. It's it's the win part that concerns me. Uh so I don't know if it has to be held in June. Can it be held in another month? Is that possible? So I would just like to hear from LA Cada first to get some input.
Yes. So I I I'll tell you, i- if you're wondering, well, Councilmember Trilla, what's what's rush, what's their urgency? I have eager residents who are excited about this event, who are starting to meet in a vacuum. I would like the experts like LA Cada and our city staff to meet with them. So that they aren't planning things that may realistically never happen. If we put this off, that's gonna be another two weeks, another month. Like, it might take five months to plan, right? We may fi- like the Girls on Fire event, like you just pointed out. But I would like for them to start working together, LA Cada, the nonprofits, official, reach out to the city staff, start documenting the hours. Right? Uh because we're gonna get reimbursed for that. So they can start just working on what is it going to be? The residents could do their input, and then they come back to us, and this is what we have, and these are the dates we're proposing. And then I just wanna get the process started. That's why I I'm seeking approval from the council today with those caveats that we mentioned out to address the biggest what if, and I think the only what if, which is the timing. And and that we're gonna approve and determine later, but at least they can get started working on this event. Now, so that's why, uh if you were proposing a friendly amendment, I'm not accepting.
So uh my friendly amendment to see uh if uh we can um maybe, I don't know if it would be tabling it or continuing the discussion, but to see if we could get LA Cada to come in and and explain to us exactly what they had in mind. Um if they had enough time for planning purposes uh and approximately how much they they are time they need to uh plan this event. Instead of having uh staffs uh spend time on this, I would like to hear from LA Cada. Because again, uh I think like what's been said is we support it, it's just the win part. And that's why a lot of, like, even for, like, the um for the League of California Cities LA Division, we're not having any events in in July, because we don't know, we don't know yet. We can actually have, uh like Vania said, we can have um small events, but even we're being very cautious on the uh League of, our LA Division and the League of California Cities because of the the appearance of things.
If I could also add to that, so regarding the Whittier event that had occurred, um that was also in conjunction with the uh Whittier Youth Build. So the item actually became um forth between uh to the city council on August thirteenth, and already had gone through the Planning Commission for Approval for Special Events for a September event. So that means they had already started planning at least a couple of months before that to get to the Planning Commission and then to the council. So if you follow that same timeline, that means they would need to be back here, or they would have to be here, approved already by our Planning Commission for Special Events at the next city council meeting for an event in June. If you're following the same timeline they followed in Whittier, not to say they couldn't do it faster or expedite it, but just as if we're using Whittier as an example, that was kind of the timeframe that that nonprofit seemed to need to put together the event.
I call a question in this. Please.
Go ahead, Councilmember Alvarez.
Yeah, I'll call the questions. It means that I I I we we need to make a vote today.
He's making a, she's asking for the call of the question. So that means you got a motion and a second, that means to take the vote.
So if there's no other comments?
Mayor, actually, we haven't taken from
Yes, I need to uh take public comment. I will now open this item for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the council regarding item number eleven may now call our teleconference line at five six two two nine nine six six two two. Each speaker will have two minutes to address the council regarding item number eleven. For those of you that submitted comments via email, your comments will be read into the record, and a further comment uh public comment via teleconference will be permitted. Did we receive uh emails regarding this item?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead.
The first email email is from Greg Elsosir of Warren High School. I am grateful for their for the conversations our civic leaders have been having regarding Downey's LGBTQ community, and I eagerly await the day where it no longer has to endure the type of comments and rhetoric that were voiced after a simple request to sponsor an affirming LGBTQ family picnic was made. While proclaiming June as LGBTQ Month is a first step to complete affirmation, my skepticism senses the council has done nothing more than offer us a thin compromise that is that is of no real concrete value. A picnic is a fun, safe way to show our Downey community that its LGBTQ citizens are influential to our city's progress, since our contributions are numerous. We are not asking for special treatment. Instead, we would like the opportunity to form bonds and partnerships with all members of the Downey community while simultaneously dispelling stereotypes and irrational fears. This will not be a divisive picnic, but an inclusive event that highlights the LGBTQ community as it celebrates all genders and sexual orientations. Lastly, and speaking as a high school teacher at Warren, our LGBTQ teen community of Downey still struggle with emotional angst far beyond that of other teenagers. Their fears and insecurities are real, and although we are living in a very progressive era, statistics say that the majority of teens stay closeted. I can attest to this reality, since several LGBTQ students have contacted me for help and guidance through my Instagram page, using anonymous names for fear that even their teacher will betray their confidence. Since our picnic will be open to the entire community, our LGBTQ teens will be able to The next correspondence is from Justin Mueller. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Next correspondence is from Justin Mueller. Thank you for taking your time to read this. As a teacher at Warren High School for twelve years now, I've noticed such a strong shift in student interest and perspectives of local, statewide, national, and world events, including the push for LGBTQ equality. This evidence for this is in the marches and protests that have happened over the past twelve months, as well as informative classroom discussions about world events. Whether you or I or the community as a whole agrees with their objectives, I'm happy that there are that they are practicing in such a calm and collected way, their freedom of speech and assembly. Recently, Warren High went through a self-study. During this two-year process, we celebrated our accomplishments and nitpicked our shortcomings. Through this whole process, we came up with dozens of things to celebrate and nitpick. However, it wasn't until the students were interviewed by the visiting group when we realized a shortcoming that had not crossed our minds yet was very obvious. Students claim that while teachers and staff at the school are fantastic and supportive, the students don't have confidence that teachers and staff at the school are ready for social change. It got me thinking, are they right? Am I ready for these changes? Is the school ready? Is Downey ready? I think I am ready. I think our school is close to being ready, and I think that this is a great opportunity for the city of Downey to show that they are either ready or at least taking the necessary steps. I think the inclusive family LGBTQ picnic idea is not only a great idea for an event, but a fantastic opportunity for the city. Please take advantage of that opportunity. Thank you again. The next correspondence is from Sayaka Ponse. Dear City Council, my name is Sayaka Ponse. I am a representative of Whittier Pride. Two years ago, an idea was brought forth from the community to host a picnic for the LGBTQIA community of Whittier. A handful of hardworking volunteers, an inclusive youth-based nonprofit, and some advocates moved that idea forward, and with a few months of planning, the Whittier community hosted its first pride event. It was an amazing day where everyone, regardless of age, race, politics, gender expression, or sexual orientation, celebrated celebrated being a true community. The event drew thousands of people from the local area as well as surrounding areas. Family-focused activities, local commerce, regional resources, churches, music, balloons, and food-filled Central Park. It drew together the whole LGBTQIA community alongside allies and advocates. The event was attended by council, local, state, and federal federal elected representatives eager to connect with their constituents and future voters. The planning process was clouded with a lot of fear. Free from both sides, there was a fear that this event would divide conservative, quiet neighborhood. Fear that violence and hate would muddy the event. Fear that we could not provide a safe space for our participants. Fear that it would be well attended. Fear that the cost would be an impossible challenge. Fear that the city was not ready to embrace the LGBTQIA residents that already lived here. Fear that including children would be inappropriate to the conversation of gender expression and add confusion to questioning you. These fears dis- dissipated as the planning committee made successes every week. Yes, there were some mixed opinions at the city council meeting leading up. The next correspondence is from Jamie Byad, I'm sorry, Byad Dares. Good afternoon. I am writing this on behalf of my support for bringing an inclusive picnic to Downey. As a teacher in our community, I see firsthand the inclusive curriculum we deliver to our students. It only makes sense that our community echo the same sentiments. We should absolutely have this picnic as a part of our culture. Times have changed, and so should we. Next correspondence is from Eddie Martinez. Dear Honorable Mayor Frometa and council members, I hope you are doing well and in the best of spirits. The Latino Equality Alliance supports the proposed Downey Family Pride Picnic. Our mission is to promote safety, equity, and wellness for Latino LGBTQ community. A family pride picnic will provide a safe space for LGBTQ and ally ally youth and their families to celebrate love and community. Growing up in Huntington Park and working at Stonewood Center Theater during my college years, I struggled to accept my identity as a gay man. I wonder if I had a pride family picnic or event as a youth, I would not have emotionally struggled for so many years. This event is for the youth. It's about family acceptance and love. Please support it. Today, I am out and proud Vice Mayor of Huntington Park, and this event will bring joy to the LGBTQ community of Southeast Los Angeles. Thank you. Next um correspondence is from Fatima Mayor Frometa and City Council. During our last city council meeting, there were many hateful and disrespectful comments toward our LGBTQ neighbors opposing the Downey Family Pride Picnic. Comments regarding the event dividing the community are absolutely ridiculous when LGBTQ people have always lived in Downey, a city of diverse culture. This event would finally showcase and celebrate a group of people who have faced adversities who are our Downey youth, family members, business owners, nurses, firefighters, leaders, and much more. This event would absolutely unify the community because it promotes acceptance for everyone, regardless of who they love, how they want to live, and identify. This event is no different from the other events held at parks. The only difference is the hateful group of people opposing it. Families are still able to bring chairs, blankets, have fun, and embrace community. The city will not burden the cost. Sponsors will pay for the event and offer free hamburgers, hot dogs, chips, and soda for everyone who attends. This is also a safe space to spend an afternoon of activities, entertainment, and learn about resources available to the LGBTQ community. I am in strong solid solidarity with our LGBTQ neighbors and support Downey's pride events. Next email is from Elliot Schwartz. Please recognize Pride Month. LGBTQ people have faced discrimination and continue to face discrimination. This is one small way we can help show we will not stand for it. Next correspondence is from Hava Buchanan. I fully support a June Pride Month for Downey. I am a straight cis-cisgender woman, but I want to make it known that I fully support and stand with my LGBTQ brothers and sisters. Pride Month shouldn't be a privilege that only big cities like Long Beach and LA get to have. The suburbs need to have our own Pride Month, too, and that's why I want the city council to make June Pride Month. Peace. Next email is from Robert Bass. Hey, my name is Robert Bass, and I am the latest in the long line of Basses who lived in Downey. You don't have to be LGBTQ to be horrified at the homophobic public comments the council has received in regards to the proposed Pride Month declaration. A celebration of love and identity in a marginalized community does not discriminate against anyone and therefore doesn't affect any of the residents who have written in claiming otherwise. While I may be a straight cis dude, I one hundred percent support the city of Downey declaring June LGBTQ Pride Month, and I would be more than happy to celebrate the LGBTQ commu- community alongside them. After all, that seems to be the most Christian thing to do. The next correspondence is from Matt Wait. To whom it may concern, I am a Downey stakeholder and a Kaiser employee. I urge Downey to adopt June as Pride Month to help recognize the LGBT community in the city. Next correspondence is from Alexandria Contreras. My name is Alex Contreras, and I grew up in Downey. Needless to say, it was and still is in some ways not an accepting city if you're a part of the LGBTQ community. The amount of homophobic comments that have been organized in this city by those who feel comfortable being openly bigoted is exactly why June should be recognized as Pride Month in Downey. Last year, I made history by organizing Downey's first-ever Pride March in which we celebrated our community and took pride in our existence. For too long, Downey has ignored the LGBTQ community and pretended we didn't exist. By actively including and celebrating a community that is discriminated against, Downey will take a step in fighting against bigotry and hatred. I am eager to organize a second Pride March because our stories, our lives, and who we are deserve to be celebrated instead of erased. The next correspondence is from Nicole Martinez. Dear city of Downey, as a born and raised Downey citizen, I would very much like Downey to recognize June as Pride Month and allow festivities. I have always thought of Downey as a great city, and recognizing the LGBT community would only further prove that. Not only would inclusivity of this month strengthen our community, but will take a stand against discrimination and bigotry. I have two young kids, and having them grow up in this town means a lot to me. I am raising my kids to not only be themselves, but to never bully others for who they are. I hope they grow up feeling welcome, safe, and secure in the city of Downey. Living in a city that also reflects those values of respect is important to my family. I hope our community takes the right step forward in recognizing June as Pride Month. And the last email is from Sarah Haji. Hi, hope all is well. I am writing as a queer woman myself and as a close friend of Alex Contreras and other queer folks in Downey in support of Downey recognizing June as Pride Month. The LGBTQ community has been through so much struggle and hardship and have a right to live in safety and security in their own community. Downey recognizing June as Pride Month is a huge step forward in visibility for LGBTQ folks and us feeling safe and welcome in the places we call home. I hope you vote yes and recognize June as Pride Month in honor of LGBTQ folks who have contributed so much to what Downey is today. Thank you for your consideration. I will take the calls now, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead and let's do the calls.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Hey, Mommy! Want to talk about the party inside the park? We want to have a party at the park, but also to celebrate Juneteenth, the freedom of the Jews from their captivity as slaves by the Egyptians. So we should do both pride and the end of slavery in Downey. But no, no, Claudia doesn't want to. A fucking lousy party for a couple of thousand dollars. But it's too hard. We can have clowns, balloons, cake, sandwiches, hamburgers, and a hot dog eating contest. And we can finally learn what we've all wanted to know. How many hot dogs can Claudia Frometta stuck down that fat fucking face at one time? And we could raise money for charity too. So we should hold the party at the end of June because the whole government will be open by then because that dumb fuck Gavin Newsom is going to open the government so he can win his reelection on his recall. Thank you, Republicans, for the recall. Or we'd be in lockdown till 2025 with these fucking ridiculous rules. Matt, vaccine, that does-
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Hi, good evening. Um, I'd like to start off by thanking Councilmember Trujillo and Councilmember Alvarez for, well, Councilmember Alvarez for the proposal and Councilmember Trujillo for making some great points in support of it. I understand he is part of the community, but no matter what, he's taking the right stance. And Councilmember Ashton, thank you so much too. Um, I'm not a member of the community, however, I am in support. I mean, we talk so much about equality. We talk so much about doing the right thing. And in reality, um, we see here in our own council meetings um, how retrograde so much of our city is in regards to just the acceptives of people from different preferential sexualities. And so anyways, that being said, so much discussion has been had on this subject. Um, and so much resistance is coming from Mayor Frometa. And I'd just like to say that, that, uh, um, you know, you guys all made some good points, but this, this needs to come forward, needs to come through. It's the right thing to do. Uh, we should put it in stone, and I don't see why we can't just come through with it today and then make, and set, set, set a, set something, some sort of uh, of a measure where if, uh, in just in case, you know, cases do surge and we're not able to come through with this event through in June, then we can go ahead and postpone it for July, August. But it shouldn't deter us from going ahead and actually completing this and getting it over with. Um, if we do, and any resistance to it, in all honesty, is just, in my opinion, um, just a setback and another attempt to just go ahead and negate the reality of our current, uh-
Thank you, your time is up.
Your time is up.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Mommy! Mommy, we need to have picnics. For God loves the USA picnics, especially in Downey, Mommy. Yeah, now regarding this, um, Blanca Tella view shit, uh, let's talk about, let's talk about what is important. Matters of public importance are picnics. Where people can suck down a hot dog? Put mayonnaise and mustard on their bread as they spread it open? And they could even get a straw nowadays and slip down that coke or even the nice ponchi ponch. But I want the picnic to be open for us, Mommy, because I want to take my pussy and pooches to the park for the picnic. My pussy and pooches love the park, and especially when there's-
Mr. Herman, please stay on topic or we will disconnect.
Oh, please, Miss Ivania. Best practice, stop threatening me. You know, when Mr. Trujillo talked about yellow tears, he really made God hate fags, and they violate these-
You please disconnect. Thank you.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Yes, I want to start off by saying, uh, first of all, Frometa and Pacheco, you guys did not support it. Especially you, Frometa. You actually voted against this and called it divisive. So I'm not going to let you council members rewrite history and say that you were in support of this event from the beginning because if we have to show the community the record, we will do that. Now, another thing that needs to be acknowledged, look, Catherine, uh, when I was at the clergy council meeting with Ms. Frometa and the clergy council was talking about the event that they were going to host, I asked them, what's the difference between the way you're going to conduct your event and how people will be complaining about the LGBTQ, uh, parade? Uh, there was not really an answer, and I assure you that Ms. Frometa did not show any opposition at the time or give any grievances about times and dates. That's because she doesn't care, and she doesn't want this to happen, and obviously she didn't vote for it. She was cool using taxpayer money when it involved $5,000 for Ensenada. She was for it then, but now she's complaining. At least until Trujillo said that there's ways to pay for it. Look, it's dishonest to say that people are concerned about COVID uh, health guidelines when people are hugging and shaking hands. Uh, Pacheco hasn't even taken her two weeks, uh, after her second shot, and she's already hugging people like Kurt Kottoshian. So here's what I'm going to say to, uh, Trujillo, and I'm going to say this to Catherine. You guys need to fight hard for this event because they are working against you, and members from other groups in Downey are advising them to fight against this on religious crazy-
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Hi, my name is Raymond Reyes, and I'm not for the festival because it's not safe to do it yet. We don't know what the guidelines are going to be in three months. Um, I have done many events in Downey, and the guidelines for doing an event are just too big of a risk to do even one event. So I say you should vote no on that event because it's not going to be, it gives you enough time to June to get this event going up and running. I'm all for the Pride Festival, but you need to think about what you're asking the community and asking other council members to vote yes on this when you have no idea if it's going to change the standards in two weeks or three weeks from now. And that's all I have to say about this event. Thank you for your time. Have a great day.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking. Please state your name and begin speaking. Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Uh, hello again, so good evening. So I want to say with the other callers, um, so it's very important that, um, you know, the LGBT community is recognized and honored through this event. The people opposing this, so that would be Pacheco and Frometa, it looks like, uh, they're doing this because they're right-wingers. They represent the right wing. Um, so I want to thank, um, you know, Councilmember Alvarez and Councilmember Trujillo. Uh, it sounds like Councilmember Ashton is also supporting this because, you know, us, the LGBT community deserve this. Um, the mayor likes to smear LGBTQ members like myself. She says that we're not really part of the Downey community, we've never lived there. That's absolutely false. Uh, so it's time for honoring, um, everybody, respecting everybody, including the LGBT community. Um, so this is, uh, the attacks against this are from the right wing. Today, the CDC said that it's okay, uh, for, you know, fully vaccinated people, um, you know, to be gathering outdoors even without masks. Uh, we know from all the protests and all the data that has come about that, um, outdoor gatherings don't really, uh, they're not really spreading COVID. So, um, you know, uh, Councilmember, um, the mayor and Pacheco are opposing this because they represent the right wing. I know that Mr. Trujillo was opposed by the right wing, by the former mayors, um, the right-wing mayors, uh, because he's gay and outwardly so, and very proud. Um, and so we need to stand against this homophobia that has been festering in the city of Downey for a very long time. Uh, so we need to have this event. And of course, it's going to be safe because we know that the virus is not really spreading outdoors, especially if most people will be wearing masks. So it's completely unacceptable, uh, that the mayor and Pacheco uh, continue to revoicing right-wing perspectives. You know, they don't want to honor the LGBT community because they're right-wingers. Uh, they're fascists, authoritarians, uh, who don't deserve to be on the council. We, the-
Thank you, your time is up. Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Hello, council. If there is any way to celebrate the gays, it is by having a picnic. Nothing gayer than that, except for Herman, he's gay as fuck.
That is all, Mayor.
Other questions or comments? Uh, I will now entertain a motion.
That's correct. I, I had a question. Um, would Councilmember Trujillo be acceptable to, um, having LA Cada come to the next council meeting and provide us with the presentation as to, um, you know, what they had in mind? Um, so that way we get more information? I think I would feel more comfortable with that. And not having a date in mind, like not having a set date, or I just want to get more information. Um, my concern is COVID. Okay.
The motion, um, has, uh, states that, um, the city will allow use of the park, waive the fees, with a date to be decided. And LA Cada would come and report once they've conferred with city staff. That's, is that, is that correct, um, Councilmember Trujillo?
Okay. Can we please, please take a, a vote?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashton?
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Pacheco?
For clarification purposes, um, do, do we have a date set?
No, LA Cada and city staff are going to start meeting if, if it looks like we have the votes. Uh, and they're going to propose dates to us.
Okay, so we don't have a date set because, and we, and this would be, uh, abiding to LA County health guidelines?
Has to.
Okay, just for clarification, because my biggest concern again is COVID.
Yes.
Okay, then, yes.
Mayor Frometa?
No.
The motion is approved with Mayor Frometa voting no.
Okay, we also have, um, item number 12, discuss the American Rescue Plan allocation and use of this. Uh, City Manager Levis, who's giving the, you see, it's Vania.
Vania's busy tonight, so. Vania will give us a presentation on this.
Props for Vania, please. Props for Vania.
Good evening again, everyone. So tonight, I will be giving you a brief summary regarding the American Rescue Plan. To begin, I'll give you some background. The American Rescue Plan became law on March 11th, on 2021, and it provides urgent funding to stabilize government operations, household, and small businesses. And for the first time, all 19 municipal governments are entitled to a direct, non-compete federal formula grant from the U.S. Treasury Department. So I wanted to stop and highlight this portion right here. And this is what makes this, um, act very different from the previous act, the Consolidated Act in December and the CARES Act from March 2020. Um, the National League of Cities, League of California Cities, and cities across the nation really fought to have funding that could be directed to cities to help particularly to stabilize operations as many cities struggled with operations, loss of revenue, tourism, business closures, things of that nature. And so this was the first time in our history that, um, government agencies were able to receive that, that direct funding to be used for that purpose. Also regarding the direct funding, that means just some other specifics. All cities, towns, and villages are entitled to the federal grant from the new coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund that's within the American Rescue Plan. It is obligated to municipal- Aid is obligated to municipalities and is not in any way mingled with any aid obligated to state or county governments, so they get it on their own. Aid from municipalities is protected from state or county interference by inherent class statutes compelling states to comply, including penalties for states that fail to carry out the responsibilities to small cities and towns. So the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds had allocated $360 billion. Of that, half of that went to local, so that is county and cities. Bringing that down even further, $65.1 billion went to cities. And as of right now, the estimated allocation for the city of Downey is $27.29 million. To give some background on how the allocation calculations was determined, so the $6.5 billion funding, again, was to address an estimated $90 billion combined revenue shortfall for cities, though most cities will not receive grant amounts that is completely equal to their needs for their operations. The grant calculations are based on a modified CDBG formula. 70% of the funds, or $45.5 billion, is obligated to cities with 50,000 or more residents. Ground calculations are based on population size, poverty rates, and measures of housing instability. So it prioritizes targeting to needs. 30% of the funds, $19.5 billion, is obligated to cities with less than 50,000 residents. Ground calculations based on population size only, so this prioritizes simplification. Small city caps, so small city grants cannot be greater than any amount equal to 70% of the city's most recent pre-pandemic budget. And then two-year funding surging teams, so grants will be released in two tranches. One half of it will be coming up before, by May 10th is the date. So we should anticipate to receive the first half of our funding by that point. And then the second half of the funding will be received a year later. The spending deadline, money remains available until December 31st, 2024. And we are still receiving clarification if that means all money needs to be used by then or funding needs to be obligated by then. And it's expected that funds must be returned to the treasury if they're not all used. So eligible expenditures. So one, you can use it to respond to the public health emergency with respect to the COVID-19 or its negative economic impacts. So this includes assistance to households, small businesses and nonprofits, or aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel and hospitality. B is to respond to workers performing essential work during COVID-19 public health emergency to provide premium pay to eligible workers of a city performing such essential work. The third option is for the provision of government services to extend of the reduction revenues of such city due to the COVID-19 public health emergency relative to revenues collected the most recent fiscal year. So again, this is highlighting that cities are eligible to use this money for revenue loss, which is the biggest item that they had lobbied for. And then lastly, to make necessary investments to water, sewer and broadband infrastructure. The provisions only state that these three items can be used for infrastructure. Other discussions have come up such as streets and roads. As of right now, those items are not eligible, however, we are still waiting from guidance from Treasury to see if there's any flexibility when it comes to that. So other items you just wanna highlight that are also involved in the American Rescue Plan. So there are monies set aside for rental assistance, and of that, California will be receiving $2.2 billion. This is in addition to the additional $2.1 billion, I believe, that California had received as part of the Consolidated Act back in December. And they actually just launched their program last month for those monies. So that program just started, and then we'll wait for the next round of funding regarding this new funds. There's also homeowner assistance program. California will receive $1 billion for that. Emergency housing vouchers is $500 million received for California. Homeless assistance, again, 500 received for California. And then there's FEMA emergency food and shelter. There's also money that's gonna be set aside for small businesses. $2 billion will be given to California. The restaurant direct assistance, this is money that'll be specifically for restaurants. In fact, this is parting way through the SBA, and they just announced today that they will be opening up the portal for registration for applications beginning on May 3rd at 12:00 PM. So restaurants can apply for this grant. We also have business assistance, PPP. This program has now been extended with additional monies, the Economic Disaster Loans. And while I can't list everything that is involved in the American Rescue Plan, but there are other items just to note, or supplemental nutrition programs, tax credits, the stimulus checks, unemployment funds for state capital projects, transit schools and colleges as well also received funding. In addition to that, we are still in the city highlighting other assistance programs that it still have available funding. So our program, small business assistance, the rental assistance program, small business administration still has their paycheck protection program funds. Also, the California Infrastructure Economic Development Bank, the Long Beach Small Business Development Center, California Department of Tax and Free Administration. So all these groups still have funds available in addition to what I have outlined at the American Rescue Plan. And we promote this. I know community development staff has been promoting it to businesses. We've also have it on our website, and we have notified, questions come up on our hotline. So based on this information provided so far by the Treasury and looking at what revenues, resources are available for both residents and businesses, staff have come up with the following allocation or uses for the allocation with the first distribution of the funds. So the first item is the water treatment facilities. As mentioned, water is an allowable use for water infrastructure. We have revenue loss. So finance and last year's adopted, or as part of the adopted budget, they had estimated about $12 million in revenue loss. Fortunately, through a lot of proactive measures of the finance team and city manager, and also years of planning, fortunately, it wasn't 12 million, but they are estimating about 8 million of revenue loss. And so that we split up within the two years, 4 million this year and potentially 4 million for the following year. But we'll continue monitoring the status of the current budget cycle to see where we land. COVID-19 expenditures, we have the food drive, senior meals, calls, PPE staff, and also modifications for facilities as we start to reopen. And also as we put more programs and services out to make sure we follow any county or state guidelines to make sure we do six feet of social distancing or anything of that nature. Nonprofits, we are suggesting to provide to nonprofits about $300,000 for COVID-19 resources and support. And then lastly, distance learning, $225,000. So this is for the library to purchase of some new kiosks for rentals of laptops and also just laptops, expanding their laptops to be used for checkouts and also some computers. This will really help bridge that digital divide and any inequities that occur in the city. So we can help with distance learning and also with any future job researching and things of that nature. So going down through that breakdown, it does come out to $13,645,000 that is being broken out. And that concludes staff report at this time, and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Vanya. I wanted to ask you, when you talk about the nonprofits receiving a certain amount, do we have a specific list of nonprofits?
Yes.
That that would be part of this? And I think you've mentioned 300,000. So are these part of the annual nonprofits that we have?
Yeah, it'd be similar to what CD, as part of the CDBG process. So there's about 10 groups that they would be part of. I can read that off if you like. So the Whole Child, TLC, Alacata, Community Family Guidance Center, PTA Helps, Food Helps, Plaza de Rosa Preschool, Southern California Rehab Services, Kingdom Causes and the Ark of LA OC.
And, Mayor?
Yes.
So just really quick, so this, what we have in front of us is for the first disbursement. Do we have plans for the second disbursement?
No, not yet. That's still a year away, so we don't really know where the finances are gonna be. This is what we're looking at. But I would venture to get, I would venture to say that a significant portion would also go to water treatment as well. So we're trying to always stay ahead of the state guidelines on that, so we'll continue to make investments in our water.
So now, and City Manager Levis, we had talked about in our previous meeting and about the allocation of some of these funds for the street repairs.
Yeah.
I don't see that.
Yeah, they're not eligible. There's three distinct areas of infrastructure, water, sewer.
And broadband.
And broadband. Yeah.
Thank you for that clarification.
And the streets will be touched because we're actually in the process of trying to do some financing to raise about $30 million for streets, so.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I'll entertain. Actually, let's go to the phones. I will now open up this item for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the council regarding number 12 may now call our teleconference line at 562-299-6622. Each speaker will have two minutes to address the council regarding item number 12. Those who submitted comments via email, your comments will be read into the record, and a further public comment via teleconference will be permitted. Did we receive any correspondence about this?
Mayor, we did not.
Okay, let's take the callers if we have any. I suspect we do.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Me! Mommy! Talk about the money from Biden! All that COVID money! Doesn't seem like you know how to apply! How come Garcetti? He took and dropped his pants and he got a billion dollars? You can't get a couple of hundred million? Surprise! What about PPP? How come you don't help people in Downey get their PPP? One and two! Cuz every fucking business in Downey been fucked up! So they had a 25% drop in revenue between 2020 and 2019? Blocker knows how to get PPP! All you gotta do is look at her face, hiding in that mask, knowing she got her $20,200 max plus a boy, right?
Please stay on topic, please. Stay on topic.
That's right! I'm on topic perfectly, mentally. Because you wanna know how to grab all that fucking money that Biden's giving out, and you can't get none! All you gotta do is ask! All you gotta do is tell them that you serve retards! And they'll give you all the money you want! That fucking money's everywhere! It's coming out everybody's ears! Billions and billions and billions of fucking free dollars! And you dumb fucks don't know how to get five cents of it cuz you're busy at 11 o'clock, 10 o'clock at night, listening to people who sound like fucking.
Please state your name and begins, please state your name and begin speaking.
Hi, good evening. I'd like to raise a few questions regarding where this money is gonna be directed to, how it's gonna be organized and such. And I want to make clear that I stand for this money being directed specifically for the people who have been hardest hit by the COVID pandemic. This should not be directed mostly toward businesses. I wanna emphasize the priority that should be placed on the people and those who have been hardest hit. Please make sure that you ensure their security, their safety and well-being before any other interest, personal, business, economic, social. Please, thank you so much, and have a good night.
Please state your name and begin speaking.
Mommy, it's me!
Please state your name and begin speaking.
Okay. Mommy, it's me! Um, Ivania said that we're under an American Rescue Plan and that people of America are the hardest shit and the people of America are the ones suffering, not the businesses! Because block on criminal Frometta know how to help small businesses corrupt our system! Panhandling bitches! The Federal Grants Act doesn't represent cities. It represents corruption because we know for a fact there'll never be a recovery from this Corona fund bullshit. That's why you have City Hall Downey locked up! And the library, under measure, asked you to all that money and never finished it, you dumb cunts! Our poverty rates are up based on populations? And you're asking for Grant One and Grant Two later? What the fuck's wrong with the Levis? You need all the money now to fix the problems? But you're too fucking stupid a central worker, right? You don't hear what pay Levis, fuck you, 42 U.S.C. 1983? And Ms. Ivania talked about infrastructure, which includes rental assistance? Well, where's the fucking money for rental assistance? All the poverty pimps have been taking it from the Downey community! And that $500 million promise to California? The fucking Gushaygus most of it? And what about the $2 billion dollars for businesses? Well, I'll tell you about business, fuck you, economic.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Hello, council. My name is Rodolfo. In my free time I take, Joey Martinez is Weiner in Miami, Catherine Alvarez is also.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking. Please state your name and begin speaking.
Hello. I don't understand who is trying to impersonate me with a computer voice, but that's kinda hilarious. So, the American Rescue Plan. So this is the part where I again share information with the council in hopes of improving your job performance. So, the American Rescue Plan, you know, is coming from the Congress. You should always be asking yourself, where are we getting all this money? You know, when it lands in the bank account, where's it coming from? The answer is that it's coming from a vote. So unlike you, you spend money, right? All you do is spend money. You decide, oh, this much money here, that much money there. The US Congress is different. It decides to create money. So when they do a quote budget, what they're doing is they're creating money. So that's how you should understand the American Rescue Plan. So, you know, they decide, you know, oh, this many billions here, that many billions there. You should advocate for more billions for things like affordable housing, truly affordable housing, really subsidize. It could even be free housing. Now, why can't Downey get a billion dollars for people's housing? There's actually no reason other than lack of political willpower. So that's why Downey tenancy has been protesting, Lucille Robo-Arlet House, right there on Brookshire. You know, it's unacceptable that, certainly the Congress could bail us out all of these misfortunes that we have because they have control of the money supply. You need to understand this. I'm serious. Like, I've called about this so many times, and this is another example. The American Rescue Plan, it's money being willed into existence, voted into existence. You don't have that power because you're not the US federal government.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Yes, thank you very much. Something happened to me today, and that's why I'm even commenting. I was with my next and wife in your beautiful city. And one of your police officers called me a chomo, in which I didn't know what that meant. But my next and wife told me what that was.
That was, that's on topic.
And what you need to do is get more money for the American.
This is item number 12, the American Rescue Plan allocation and use?
You're gonna need more money for. You're going to need more money for the more American Rescue Plan money to deal with me. For the reason that appears the Downey Police Officer Association contacted me about this. So what you need is more money from the American Rescue Plan because what I'm planning to do, I'm not yelling, I'm not cursing. My tone is very monotone.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Hi, my name is Raymond Ray. And what I don't appreciate is when people call in and harass us to be council members. Is there a way that we can fix it? So if they call too many times and harass, we don't let them come on anymore? Because I'm trying to listen to the meeting, but every time Mr. Herman or Sherman comes on, his mouth is so vulgar.
Sir, this is, I'm sorry, you can only comment on item number 12, the American Rescue Plan allocation and use.
Yeah, I know, I understand that problem too. I understand that, but I'm trying to listen to your meeting and you allow this man to come on every time. I don't, I don't understand this. Like, I'm getting frustrated trying to listen to your meeting and you allow Mr. Herman or Sherman, whatever his name is, come on and bash us to the council.
I'm sorry, we have to disconnect. Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
That is all, Mayor.
Starting this item.
So the motion is, we need a motion in a second to approve the allocation for the first disbarment of the American Rescue Plan funding as presented.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion.
Make that motion.
One second.
City Clerk Duarte, would you please take role?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashton?
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Pacheco?
Yes.
And Mayor Frometa?
Yes.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Any comments? City Manager Levis?
No, I think we're going to leave a little earlier tonight, so I have no comments.
Well, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for a good meeting. Thank you for those of you that stayed up. Have a safe night, have a good night. If you have an opportunity, please get vaccinated. I will now adjourn the meeting in memory of the victims of the Indianapolis FedEx shooting. Please bear with me as I pronounce the names. Amargit Johal, Amargit Chekon, Jaswinder Kaur, Jaswinder Singh, John Wissert, Carly Smith, Matthew R. Alexander, Samaria Blackwell, and all lives lost due to COVID. If we can please have a moment of silence. Thank you, this meeting is now adjourned. Good night, good night.